Turn your cell phones off or put them on vibrate. We also have members of the president's staff here and directly next to me, staff to this committee is Jennifer Coats. And we also have the mayor's representative, Mr. Chiron Banks. Today's hearing will be televised on Charm TV 25. This morning, the committee will hear City Council Resolution 17-0020R in informational hearing for the purpose of requesting that the Baltimore Development Corporation, the Department of Finance, and other city agencies involved in offering incentives to spur private sector development, report to the council on three specific topics. Number one, the current and planned uses of development incentives. Number two, how these incentives can be used more equitably in the future. And number three, options to improve transparency and accountability to Baltimore citizens and how incentives are awarded. Baltimore City is growing. Past development policies have created what we see around us today. One of the major questions that comes to mind is where past development strategies and policies fair and equitable? As a city, what are our strengths and weaknesses? And what are some of the opportunities that threaten to development in Baltimore? Wherever people live in Baltimore, they all want the same things: decent, affordable housing, good public services, and an attractive and safe environment. It is time to take a look at current and planned development strategies and incentives to see where we are headed and what we need to do to create and sustain a fair development strategy for the city. The city council makes decisions about development strategies and policies for Baltimore. This informational briefing will serve as an excellent tool for helping the council make strong, sound decisions about development in Baltimore. Again, the hearing is being broadcast on Charm TV 25. I hope that many people, unions, developers, and property owners are tuned in and watching as this committee is briefed on what we can do to make Baltimore better. At this time, I'd like to have President of the City Council make comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also want to recognize Councilwoman Snead, who is sitting in the balcony, that people know that she is here. First of all, I want to thank the sponsors of this legislation. I know that we had a big hearing on TIFs during the last term, but this is a way for our new council people to really understand what a TIF is and how they work to help move projects along. And I want you to emphasize, Mr. Cole, on, you know, what a TIF actually is and why it's so important that we help with those kind of things because it deals with infrastructure that is given back to the city. So I just want to thank everyone for being here, and I'm looking forward to this dialogue so that our new council colleagues could really understand what the TIF process is and what it's all about. Thank you.
Thank you. Also, at this time, I would like to begin by recognizing the sponsor of the bill and allowing him to give general comments, Councilman Bill Henry of the 4th District.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd also like to thank my cosponsors, Councilwoman Clark, yourself, and Councilman Reisinger, who I think is still recovering.
Yes.
And to give a little bit of background, the genesis for this resolution actually started last year during the... There were two things happening at the same time last year. One was Port Covington, and the other was a conversation around affordable and inclusionary housing, which, as part of that conversation, also included extensive discussion about what incentives the city offers for private development. And one of the things that I kept hearing in different rooms last year were complaints about the process, about how by the time any of these types of things get to the city council, the individual developers and other aspects of city staff have been working on, you know, some type of collaborative effort for months, maybe even, you know, a year or more. And so there is a great deal of frustration from their part when they get to the council of, "We've been dealing with this for a long time. Why aren't you guys moving faster on it?" And there's pushback frustration from us and the citizens, most of whom are just learning about it when it comes to the council for what is effectively final approval. And so that began my desire to see if we could have a conversation about were there or could there be opportunities to open that process up earlier so that it's not all of a sudden, "Hey, we're asking for this, and why haven't we already done it?", which is often what the council, the position the council has put in. That, in a wonderful example of coalition policymaking, I had already asked for a resolution to have this kind of, that kind of discussion hearing when Councilwoman Clark and Councilwoman Middleton and Councilman Reisinger were also interested in having an update on, well, where are we on the projects we've already incentivized? And we realized that the missing piece for those two things is what are we trying to do? What is our development vision as a city? And I know that there are people who complain that we don't have one. There are people who complain that we just wait and do whatever the developers say. I'm not going to make that statement right now. What I'm going to say is, I think it is incumbent on the city to show that we do have a vision and that we do have a policy on what we are going to try to encourage and what we aren't. And hopefully, we'll make some progress on that today. So thank you, Madam Chair and Mr. President, for putting this hearing together.
Thank you. Okay, next, we're going to start hearing from our department agency representatives. And each department that has a presentation, introduce yourself, and if you'd like, you can say something about yourself and then move forward with your presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Mr. President and members of the council, Bill Cole, Baltimore Development Corporation. I'm joined by Kim Clark, the Executive Vice President of BDC. We also have Steve Kraus from the Department of Finance and our Housing Commissioner, Michael Braverman. We're going to tag team this today. I'm going to quarterback us through this presentation. And just, I did, to your point, Mr. President, we took this opportunity to make it as educational as possible, knowing that we have a number of new council members that have never been through any of the incentive process before. So I'm going to walk through, I'm going to start with pilots. Mr. Kraus is actually going to handle TIFs because, at the end of the day, those go through the Board of Finance, which he manages, and we can go through how these are created. What I'm not talking about today, but we can obviously either do individual briefings or you can find how these other benefits happen, are things like the Enterprise Zone, which are state credits that the city benefits from tremendously, the focus area of the Enterprise Zone, and you all have helped us modify those focus areas. That's the Enterprise Zone on steroids. They create real property tax credits and income tax credits for employers that are creating jobs in the city. The city takes the maximum advantage of the Enterprise Zone and the focus area, and we just created a focus area in the Penn North area, hoping to create new job opportunities in Upton and the Penn North neighborhoods. We don't have in here the grocery store tax credit that the council approved to incentivize grocers to move into food deserts or to incentivize grocers to improve their stores in food deserts. We've had one successful opening since that credit has been completed, a Save-A-Lot in Councilwoman Snead's district, or I think it's in Councilwoman Snead's district. And then there's another one coming that's going through the process right now. We also have brownfield tax credits, CHAP tax credits, and then there's a special pilot for the Port of Baltimore on state-owned land in the city of Baltimore that is a contractual arrangement between the state and the city. Those are all things that, you know, we can dig deeper on, but we'd spend so much time today. And those are mostly by right credits that are established in state law but are certainly part of our portfolio. And if you go to our website and look at incentives, you'll see a one-pager on each one of those. So I'm going to get into the pilots here real quick.
And real quick, before you begin, I'd just like to recognize Robert Stokes has joined us from the 12th District.
Thank you. So you do have, the members of the council have this in front of you in a packet. We put it on two slides a page to save paper here, but the pilot laws were created, in some cases, many decades ago, and they were very, very targeted when they were established. And you can see each one has a different provision that created the enabling legislation for the city to then use a pilot. And you'll notice that, because I often get the questions, "Well, why weren't pilots citywide?". Well, that was not what they were created for. Initially, they were created to stimulate the commercial district, the downtown commercial district, and that was back in the 90s. And you'll look and you can see the dates where all of these were created. The Hippodrome Performing Arts Center was in 2000, and then there were state-related economic development projects that were done in 2007. And it wasn't until 2013, and I think it was then Delegate Mitchell, wasn't it, that introduced the legislation to allow citywide pilots under, pilots citywide under certain circumstances. So, you know, when you talk about pilots, the city did not, BDC or anybody else, did not have the authority to do pilots outside of what you see in front of you. It's a very targeted tool. So you can just see, when you go to the next slide here, that these economic development pilots had to fit in a very specific category. It was a hotel that provided 100 full-time jobs and at least $20 million of private capital investment, an office building with 150 and 20 million, a retail facility with 100 jobs and 10 million, a multifamily residential facility that provided at least 5 million of private capital investment, an all-street parking facility, and a mixed-use facility containing one or more of the above. So these were very targeted tools that were used to incentivize development. And then the high-performance tax credit, which some of you may remember, was created several years ago, 2013, to incentivize redevelopment of the languishing office buildings downtown. We had vacancy rates had increased, and we were languishing in some of our Class B office market. And working with the then Rollins Blake administration, the council, Downtown Partnership, and others, the high-performance market rate tax credit was created and approved by the city council, and it was downtown and a couple of targeted neighborhoods throughout the city. At the end of our presentation, I'll show you how effective that tool has been. The 15-year tax credit burns off at the end of this calendar year and goes away. The 10-year tax credit that replaced it was just authorized by this body and will continue on. So this very effective tool, which is a by-right tax credit to incentivize creating market-rate apartments throughout the city, will continue on, and you'll see the benefits of that later. So here are some of the pilot facts, just the history. There are 16 authorized pilots in the city. 14 are active. Now, mind you, we're only talking about the economic development pilots. There are all sorts of housing pilots that have been done over the years that are not contained in this. These are just the economic development. Housing-only pilots are handled very differently and are not accounted for in what I'm showing you here. But you can see, based upon what I showed you, there's a heavy concentration of these pilots in the downtown core because that's where they were, that's what they were established for originally. You can see the numbers here, 652 million in assessed value and the amount of taxes abated as of 20, in 2017. Pilots do include a profit-sharing arrangement in, if there's a sale, and there are some old, really old pilots that had profit sharing that were done when the harbor was established, but using a pot of money that doesn't exist anymore, and some of those date back decades that we don't have access to. People always like to mention the Hyatt in particular, and that was used, was it UDAG money?
UDAG.
UDAG money. Councilwoman Clark remembers that one quite well. So, you know, in addition to the tax numbers you see here in terms of abatement, we also generate hotel tax, which pays it the full amount, the personal income tax, parking taxes, personal property taxes, utility taxes, and admission and amusement taxes that all go into the general fund benefit of why you do, why you use these tools. Here are the address...
Before you move to the next one, I just want to announce that the agency just gave us these copies of the slides, and we are getting some printed for the people that are present here today as well.
Thank you. So the next slide, page seven, these are the BDC pilots that were done, again, consistent with the law, the laws that we showed you earlier, and it's got the addresses, the years that they were done, and the expiration of the pilots. You'll notice the very last, the final two on the list are State Center. There was a pilot approved for a portion of the State Center development. Obviously, that project is in limbo right now, and nothing has been done there. And we continue to negotiate with Penrose on the Eager Square pilot that has been approved. We're in the contract terms of that one. So that would make way for a market-rate apartment project in the EBDI project, which is desperately needed for that development. So next, you see the active pilot agreements, and you can see that they are set to taper off, given the fact that we really haven't been using pilots as a tool in the last several years, and in no small part because of the by-right tax credit that's in place. When a developer has come to us seeking a pilot, we point them back to the by-right tax credit and say, "Make that work." There's no need to do something extraordinary if we've got something on the books already. And you can see the dates here where all of these fall off, and you'll see that round about 2021, there's a steep decline in the number of active TIFs as they go away. On our next slide, you'll see the taxes abated versus the pilots collected, and you'll see that these ramp up consistently. And again, about the same time you start seeing the pilots dropping off, you'll see these numbers increasing, and it's obviously significant revenue to the city as these pilots burn off. So I'm going to get into some of the specific pilot details here, just to show you some of the examples of what was incentivized using the pilot laws at the time. This was Camden Court Apartments. It's a 15-year pilot that created 200-plus apartments, 111 parking spaces. Center Point was a 20-year pilot with 370 units. The Hippodrome Theater was a 20-year pilot for a 2,200-seat theater. The Zenith Apartments across from Oriole Park was done in 2003, was a 15-year pilot with parking and apartments. St. James Place was a 15-year pilot with 25 units and 1,800 square foot of retail on the west side of downtown. Redwood Towers was done in 1999 with a 20-year pilot. Harbor East, virtually, none of these projects would have moved forward without these pilots. The Legg Mason Office and Garage was done in 2009 with a 15-year pilot on the office and a 25-year pilot on the garage. Just to explain the garage piece, that was a ridiculously expensive garage build because it is on the water, and nobody wanted to see an above-ground parking garage on the waterfront. So the city strongly encouraged the developer at that time to go down, and it increased the cost exponentially. It's probably one of the most expensive per-space garages, and so the city extended the pilot to 25 years in order to account for the extreme cost of construction. There's 1,200 underground parking spaces there that are, I think, effectively built in a bathtub. Lariat Office and Garage, which is 200,000 square foot of office space, nearly 800 parking spaces. That's where the movie theater is, in Harbor East. The gym, there's condos and two hotels in that complex. The Waterfront Marriott is a 25-year pilot, 750 hotel rooms and 620 parking spaces. It is the city's best-performing hotel and generates significant amounts of revenue for the city in hotel taxes. Spinnaker Bay, which was a project that was done in 2002 with 314 apartment units and 431 parking spaces. And then the downtown pilots, Lenore, the Residence Inn, that pilot has burned off, is fully back on the tax rolls. It sits on redwood and light. You pass it all the time. That project would not have happened without that pilot. Lenore Apartments is a fairly recent one. That was a very challenging conversion of a historic building to create residential units there and some retail on the ground floor. And then Lockwood Place, which, as you may remember, was Baltimore City Community College-owned property that was converted into a mixed-use project that has restaurants on the first floor and office above with some parking. The Fitzgerald, again, a state-owned project, a state-owned piece of property that was a, probably the city's first real public-private partnership. That was a rather complex stacking of state property. Bezuto built a project there called the Fitzgerald, along with 1,250-spaced parking garage to accommodate the University of Baltimore as UB was using its surface lot. So a pilot was done there in order to offset the cost of the garage construction and to ensure that UB could get out of it what it needed, which was parking. And then State Center, which I mentioned, nothing has happened there. There is a pilot approved. The pilot was on the parking, Kim, am I correct on that?
For State Center?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, so the pilot was on the parking for that. And then the last one is the Eager Square pilot, which is the project you see in the picture, which, again, we have, the council has approved, we're waiting for final contract terms with the developer, which is Penrose. So I mentioned early on about the high-performance market-rate tax credit and how well that has done, and this map shows you, remember, the 15-year tax credit was targeted for dilapidated or languishing office buildings in the heart of downtown and a few other neighborhoods, which is why you see in the blue, it was called a targeted tax credit for a reason. You see the numbers in the blue are the projects that were used with the 15-year. And then the citywide, which was created subsequently, the 10-year tax credit is the orange, and you can see that now extending into southeast Baltimore, north Baltimore, and a project up in, above Park Heights. You can see all the addresses on there. Many of you will know these locations. But the result of this tax credit was thousands, quite literally thousands, of brand-new apartment units throughout the city of Baltimore, which is what is, in no small way, feeding our growing millennial population and empty nesters that are deciding to return to the city. With that, I think we need to switch PowerPoints to get to the TIF presentation that Mr. Kraus is going to do. Again, while Steve is changing the slides, the one thing that is definitely a development tool in Baltimore that we should all be very mindful of are new market tax credits and historic tax credits. And anybody who has been watching what's happening in Washington know that both of those programs are under siege in the president's, in Congress's tax reform plan. We don't really know at this point how to quantify the loss of those two programs to the city, but we know that there are tens of millions of new market tax credit deals happening right now in Baltimore, that those projects would not happen if new markets go away. And I can point to a dozen or more projects that have benefited from federal historic tax credits that would not have happened without those tax credits. So we all, we may be turning to you to ask for some help in contacting members of Congress. And I'm sure our delegation's on the right page, but...
Madam Chair, can I just...
You want to do a resolution?
I, we're going to have council members ask questions after each agency representative, but I will go ahead and allow you to say...
Thank you. This isn't a question. I knew that, I knew that the president would appreciate the fact that there will be a resolution coming in on Monday to ask Congress to save the federal historic tax credit. I didn't have the numbers on new markets, but the federal historic tax credit has leveraged $500 million worth of investment in Baltimore over its lifetime.
We're trying to capture the number of new market deals. It ebbs and flows in Baltimore, but right now, I know for a fact that we've got at least a half dozen key projects in distressed communities that are benefiting from new market tax credits. Food Hub, the Food Enterprise in East Baltimore, those are all new market stacked deals. Thank you.
And just to mention again, we're still trying to get prints made of the information that was just given to us. Go ahead.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, Mr. President, and members of the committee. My name is Steve Kraus. I'm the Deputy Finance Director. I'll be talking about our TIF program. To step back before I jump into the slides, how the TIF program really got started was back in the late 1990s. A lot of the federal funding, such as block grants, earmarks, and state grants as well, began to dry up with budget problems that they were having at the state and federal level. And that was significantly impacting the city because that was the money we were using to sort of incentivize development projects in the city. As that money began to dry up, I guess a lot of folks back at that time, Jay Brody being one of them, thought about, "Why don't we look at a TIF?". And that's when the TIF program really got its start. And he and others at the city got legislation through the state and also amended the city's charter at that time. And we started doing our first TIFs in about 2003. And since that time, as you know, they've gotten bigger and some think better. And the program, I guess, evolved from that process. As with any major initiative, authorization to do TIFs is in the city charter, as I just said. It is under the General Powers Article II, Section 62 of the city charter. And there, it talks about eligible uses of the TIF proceeds. And it's important, and I know that the council already understands this, but every TIF has to come through the city council before it can be enacted and before the project can move forward. So nothing happens without full consideration by this chamber. So you all have the final say on whether or not a TIF moves forward. It doesn't matter what the BDC board says. It doesn't matter if the Board of Finance thinks this should move forward. When it comes here, if it doesn't get your vote and it doesn't pass, it doesn't happen. So you do have a lot of say, and there's a lot of public input during that period, as we've seen with Harbor Point, and of course, our most recent experience with Port Covington. The council's participation has greatly restructured those deals in certain regard, and I think we worked cooperatively as we could, and I think the project was better as a result of that. There's also, it's Section 62 and 62A. 62A talks about the special tax, and I'm going to talk about that later on. But there's a development district, and there's also a special taxing district associated with many of our projects. I'm going to talk about how those two work together in a minute. And then Article 7, that's the Department of Finance, the legislation delegates, actually the terms and the issuance of the TIF bonds, the details of that, they delegate that down to the Board of Finance. So that's how all roads come here, then all roads end up at the Board of Finance to actually issue the debt and the details associated with that debt to support the TIF district. The TIF program, the genesis of it was basically a public infrastructure kind of funding mechanism. Oftentimes, there'd be a project that had a very high development budget because of brownfields or the lack of streets, curbs, and water sewer, things like that. And that is what this was. It was to not construct private buildings, but the public infrastructure, which the city would own. So we're doing city assets to support that project. And that's what this is. It's essentially site removal, lighting, parks... It's essentially site removal, lighting, parks, things like that. And further down in Number 8, it also talks about affordable housing can be part of that too, abandoned property. Item 7 talks about parking facilities. We haven't really used TIF for parking facilities because we do have a parking bond issuance authority. So, it's a cheaper way of doing it. But anyway, the law does allow for that, but we usually would want to use parking bonds instead of TIF bonds if we had a parking garage. And the last one is the RISE Zone, which is a new development in the TIF world where state law allows TIFs to be used for lab and innovation-type facilities that are associated with a hospital or university. So, that's a new thing. And we do have U.N. BioPark, which was authorized as a TIF through this body here, is the first one that used that RISE Zone provision. Current TIF debt, we have 15 TIF districts within the city limits. Not all of them have debt associated with them. We have a West Baltimore, I think it was the Rosemount Project, which was pledged to a HUD 108 loan. Those revenues were not needed, but it was just required by the feds as additional security for that loan. Charles Village, and some of you may remember Westport, that was back in 2006, that was a very big deal. Neither one of those projects moved forward because of the economy. They hit right at the, right at the beginning of the recession. Developer could not get their funding together, and those projects did not happen, although the districts are still there. The Convention Center Hotel has a TIF district on the footprint of the hotel. So, the tax, property tax revenues generated by the hotel are given back to the hotel to help operate that, that project. But there's no debt associated with that, it's just a operating support of the hotel. This last spring, we did a refinancing of the hotel and did a big restructuring of the debt, not only the debt, but some of the arrangements include the hotel year agreement that greatly enhanced that credit. So, some of the issues that we were having with the hotel, we hope will be relieved going forward because of that refinancing. We have two that, that have been approved but have not yet issued debt, and that's the U.N. BioPark, which was that RISE Zone project I just described to you. And then, of course, Port Covington. Everybody knows about Port Covington. I don't have to go into detail on that. And here's the, here's the debt that we have outstanding right now. There's 11 projects that either have commitments to, to issue, or we have issued for. As of the date of this presentation, we have just under $200 million of actual debt, TIF debt that was issued that is outstanding. And there are the projects associated with them, including the years in which the debt was issued. Some of the early projects I told you about in early 2000s, they include Belvedere Square and Strathdale, which is in the northeast Baltimore, Harbor View, which is in downtown, and some of the more recent ones, of course, are the granddaddy of them all, Port Covington. Now, we have 199 million outstanding, but on the other side, on the next column, you can see to be issued. Those are the commitments that we have TIF authorized to be issued but not yet have been issued because the project has not moved forward yet, or that phase of the project has not required us to issue that debt. So, as you can see, with Harbor Point, there were three phases to Harbor Point. The first two were issued, but we have a, a third phase that has not been issued. So, we still have about $49 million on Harbor Point that we could issue for if they, when they're ready to move forward with their final phase. Popleton, which is a, which is a great project over here in West Baltimore, that is under construction right now. I understand it's doing very well. It's ahead of schedule. Took a long time to get that deal together, but once they did it, once they got it, they sure moved quickly. And I'm very happy to see that progress over there. That was a total of about a, it looks like almost $60 million commitment. They, we issued $12 million for that project, and that's, that's going to be a great opportunity for that neighborhood over there. Very happy with, with Popleton. Port Covington, that's $660 million. That's the big one. They have not gotten to the point where they're ready to issue their first phase, but that $660 million is out there and we expect will be issued over the next decade or two. And then U.N. BioPark is a 17.5 million over here by the University of Maryland. That's still under, under review. How do TIFs work? I'm going to go briefly of how the funds flow and how we try to manage and lessen the effect on the existing tax base. But TIFs basically begin with a development plan. Developer puts together a redevelopment, such as Port Covington. Here's the example of the Port Covington Development District. And what we do is we take a look at what that development plan is, and we draw a development district. And the development district includes currently, and this is a very important part of it, only properties that are to be redeveloped. And that's, that's a very important distinction. Our current policy is to only draw the district around areas that are going to be redeveloped. So, that way, the new increment that is generated, that is all that is being dedicated to the, to repayment of the bonds. It's not the existing tax base. So, in the, in the Port Covington example, that area in red, that was all going to be redeveloped and was part of their redevelopment plan. And if I could, I'll just talk about, some of you might remember this slide from Port Covington, but what the, what the legislation does, the development district legislation basically identifies that perimeter I had just showed you and the properties that are going to be in the district. And it also sets the base. And the base is, is, identifies the, the date at which the, the property taxes and the assessed value that is fixed. And that fixed value is what is going to be remaining with the city's general fund. So, that's represented here in that dark blue bar. So, in Port Covington, as the example, the area within that red perimeter, the date of that, passage of that legislation fixed the assessed value and the existing property taxes in Port Covington. So, that, from that date forward, all the new development will then be dedicated first to the TIF bonds. So, by doing that, you're not affecting the existing tax base and minimizing the effect on the general fund because you're only capturing the new assessment that wouldn't have been there without the TIF. And that's the part that's being dedicated to the bonds. So, anyways, we go through this slide, you're going to see that base number is going to remain the same. And then, as the project begins to move forward, construction begins, that new assessment, the new development begins to be constructed. And when you have new development, you have new assessed value. When you have new assessed value, you have new property taxes. And what the legislation does, it segregates that new, that new assessment and that new property tax revenue is segregated away from the general fund and is dedicated to repayment of the bonds. And that's reflected here in, in the light blue. So, as the project begins to develop, the revenues move up, and it's those, those revenues that are being segregated to, and dedicated to the TIF bonds. Okay. And then, as the project matures and the project is completed, debt on the TIF is fixed. It's a fixed-rate bond, it's just like your mortgage. It eventually, it, it flattens out and becomes stationary, and you can see that by, by the, by the light blue. The bottom, the, the base number stays the same, and that, that revenue continues into the general fund and is uninterrupted. But it's that light blue part, that new increment, the new property taxes associated only with the redeveloped property, is segregated and paid first to the, to retirement of the TIF bonds. But over time, if you look at the very top, you'll see that light green part. What that is, is over time, as, as inflationary factors and reassessments happen, eventually, those properties will, will generate more revenue than is what is needed for, to retire the TIF debt. So, that's what, that also comes to the general fund. So, we have, so we have here, you have the incremental revenues in the middle that go to repayment of the debt service. If there's anything beyond that, that also comes to the general fund. But always and always, the very bottom, that dark blue remains, that's the base that was set at the very beginning. That stays with the general fund and flows to us uninterrupted. And, oops, let me go back. And then, when the project is done and the debt is retired, it could be 25, 30 years, it takes a long time to retire this debt. But when it, when it is retired, then the TIF district will no longer exist, and 100% of the revenues then come back to the city. And that's reflected here in the, in the green bars to the far right. You no longer need that, those incremental taxes in the middle there for the debt because the debt doesn't exist anymore. So, at that point, the TIF district ceases to exist, and we really, that's where the real benefit happens. We really enjoy all those property taxes associated with that new development. There's a four-step process for a, a TIF to get approved. At first, it begins with, as I said, is a development plan. And if it's a housing development, it goes through Mr. Braverman and Department of Housing. And if it is primarily a commercial economic development, it goes to BDC and Mr. Cole. And it is, that agency then works with the developer to put together a preliminary TIF plan. And that's very important because they're working with the city's consultants. The city has legal and financial consultants that are on contract with us and are controlled by the city, by us, that are, they operate at our direction. They work with the developer to put together this, this TIF proposal and application that will then be presented to the Board of Finance. Part of that application is the famous "but for" test, and they have to demonstrate, but for the TIF, you know, this project would not happen. And that's a very important part of the, of the application. Typically, what, what drives this is, is just the, the infrastructure costs, whether it be brownfields, whether it be shoreline erosion control, or whether it be they don't have their streets or they need sewers, that make the project too expensive. And the project would not move forward except for the city providing the TIF, and then that makes it affordable and it can move forward with that subsidy. Step two, then, once that plan is, is put together, it's then presented to the Board of Finance for consideration. And all of the, the Board of Finance meetings, they're over here at the Ablewoman Building on the first floor, they're all open to the public. All of the discussion that we have is, is free for the public to, to listen to and watch. It is a, it is not a, an informational hearing, like you may have testimony here. They can't participate in the meeting, but they can certainly observe, they can ask questions. But we're conducting business and they're considering these projects. They can see it, they can understand what the, what the project is about, and the full presentation happens at those board meetings. In addition to this, we also put the TIF application online under the Board of Finance webpage, which is part of the city's webpage. Under the Documents tab, you will see all of the documentation, the full application, full description of the project, and all the details are there for the public to see. So, if the Board of Finance approves the concept approval, then moves on to the next Can you kind of just hit the arrow? Oh, it's, did that move on? There it goes. Okay. All right. Then the next phase is, just you standing up moved it. Yeah. The next phase is, is then getting the legislation together. And that's what we end up presenting here to this body for consideration of the TIF because the Board of Finance has said, looks like we have a good deal here. We think it is worthy of consideration. And so, we start devoting resources to really drilling down on the details and putting the legislation together. There's three pieces of legislation that, that the council is asked to consider with each project, is obviously establishing the, the development district, which is that red boundary we showed, and all the properties inside that district. Again, we only include properties that are being redeveloped. If you're using properties that are not being redeveloped as part of the TIF district, there's the potential that you'll be diverting funds from the general fund that are, that are, would be creating a deficit in, in the general fund in that if, if you include properties that are not being redeveloped, those revenues would have gone to the general fund anyway. So, there's no reason to have that in there without creating a deficit. So, we, we only include properties that are going to be redeveloped to, to hold harmless the existing tax base and the general fund as much as we can, as far as the, the debt service on the bonds is, is concerned. Okay? And then, the other one is establishing the special taxing district. This is also very important because if, for any reason, the, the incremental revenues, it's that, that light blue bar above the, the solid bar, if, for any reason, those revenues are not sufficient to repay the debt, there is a special tax that is assessed to the developer to make up that difference. So, that way, the general fund is held harmless there too. If we don't have enough new revenues to pay for that debt, the developer has to come up with that difference. And we do that analysis annually and make sure that those numbers add up. And if there is a special tax required, we issue a bill to the developer. We have done that on, on a couple of occasions, and they have paid it. And also, and the third piece of legislation is, is the authority to issue the bonds. And then, step four. There we go. I don't know what's going on. Okay.
He's a numbers guy.
I'll have to, I'll have to do this. Okay. Step four, then, is, is assuming the, the city council approves the TIF through the legislation, the three hearings and, and all that goes with that, then, we then drill down on the details, and the Board of Finance then considers the actual issuance of the debt. And then, that's when the project can get its funding and the project actually moves There is a lot of due diligence that goes on. We obviously want to make sure that, that the project is feasible, the developer has the capacity to do it. We look at all of that. We look at engineering reports, we look at market studies as well as appraisals, and, and we just make sure that, that all of the commitments are in place. The city does not issue the debt, the TIF debt, until all of the funding for that particular phase of the project is in place and committed. That includes equity, any private lending that has to happen. All of that has got to be in place and committed before we will then issue our debt, and we all kind of step off together with all of our money, and the project then has become constructed. What happened with, with Popleton was that they could not, go ahead. You have a question?
No.
Yeah. What happened with Popleton was, was that the, the developer could not get a commitment on their private funding. Once that came through, HUD gave them an insurance commitment, so that's all they needed to secure their funding. That finally came through, and when they did that, that is when we all stepped off together and that project moved forward. But without that commitment from them, we weren't going to get ahead of that process because if we issued our debt and then they can't get their commitment, then we're, we're out there with our debt exposed. So, that's why we wait until everybody's got their commitments together and we all move off together. And that's the way you really, I think, reduce your risk. We do, as I said, we do an annual review of each, of each project, and if those incremental revenues are not sufficient, we issue a special tax. And as it says here, all the, all the financing's got to be committed to before we will issue. Yeah, this is the ongoing monitoring. I think I've already, already discussed this, where we do an annual review, and if there's a shortfall in those, on those incremental taxes, we issue a special tax. And here's a, the map isn't that clear. I apologize for that. It's hard to fit a map this size on, in the screen. But this is a, a chart map showing where all of the, the TIF districts are in the city. You can see there are a number of them out, out in the, you know, away from the Inner Harbor. Certainly, the biggest money, I'll be honest, obviously, is right here in the Inner Harbor. But we do have some projects that are out there further in the neighborhoods, and you can see by, by the map there, there's 15 of them, and you can see them and review them as you will.
Thank you. Before we move further with, I think, a housing presentation, I have some council members that do have some questions for BDC and Finance, and we'll start with Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have one question on tax credits versus pilots, and then, two on TIFs. The first one, and I'm, I'm going to try to phrase this appropriately. I, I understand some of the logistical benefits, but in a bigger-picture way, what's the benefit to the city of having a tax credit like the high-performance tax credit as opposed to doing negotiated case-by-case pilots? And I want to stress, I definitely get why that's better from the perspective of the developers from a planning perspective, and I can see some timing advantages. But I'm, is, is, is there a financial advantage to the city of having a buyright tax credit versus negotiated case-by-case pilots?
I don't really, I don't know that. So, I think that the buyright tax credits provide certainty on both sides. And you know, going in, for the targeted, the targeted that's going away, a developer, property owner could look at a, a map and go, I'm in the zone or I'm not. If I'm in the zone, this is what I'm eligible for, and here's my timeline. We had an expiration on, date on that targeted for a reason. We wanted people to rush to build. We wanted to create that critical mass of development projects in that targeted zone, and it worked. You can look at that map to show that what the council and the previous administration sought to do was accomplished. We got thousands of new apartment units and a bunch of old buildings converted into hotels, put a lot of people back to work, created job opportunities, and did everything we had hoped, but it provided certainty. You knew, going in, you looked at the map, you knew exactly what it was, you knew that there wasn't going to have to be a negotiation. So, I would say certainty to the developer, but also certainty on our side. We could simply say to some, but we had, just so you know, we had more than a handful of developers that came to us and said, 15 years isn't enough. We want to do a 20-year pilot. I'll use Kim words, tough. I mean, you all know, Kim, that's, I mean, we said it a lot. We had developers that were right outside of the 15-year zone that said, it's not fair. And I said, well, go back to the council. They're the ones that drew the line. And I said, well, go back to the council, they're the ones that drew the line. Didn't admit that I was part of it, but, right. But I mean, that, so, you know, we had, we had certainty on our end. It simply didn't make sense to negotiate a better deal for the developer, because that's really all you're negotiating, would it be a better deal on their side, when we had a map that showed this is what you qualified for. Either you were in or you weren't. The citywide is the same thing. It also, for out, for people not developing here, we're seeing a lot of people who are coming from outside of this area to invest in Baltimore. And they're looking at this and going, oh, wait a second, I don't need to, I don't need to go through some process, I know that there's this tax credit sitting there, and if I'm meeting the criteria set forth in the legislation, that the council set forth in terms of the number of units, the amount of money required, I knew I got this by right. So it, it, there are people now that are looking to invest here that wouldn't otherwise do it, because they didn't want to have to go through a long extended political process.
So there's a marketing advantage to it.
I, I think that's absolutely true. You know, we, we certainly have seen an uptick, you can look at that map and see where apartments are popping in, where there had been no activity in some cases for decades, and I think it is directly attributable to that tax credit.
Mr. Kraus, the second question was some clarity on the but-for test. When we do the but-for test, does that show that without the TIF or the incentive, that that project will not be profitable or as profitable? Or does the but-for test show that without this incentive, no one is going to try to do any kind of project here?
I, I think what you just said is, is, is what it really shows.
The former, the former, okay.
Right, is it would not move forward without the TIF.
That this particular project would not move forward.
Right. The development plan being presented for that project would not move forward without the assistance of the TIF.
But, I mean, just to use a, an individual example, the, the U M BioPark, like, that land, that land that's covered by that TIF, the but-for, what the but-for analysis shows is that if we didn't do the TIF, they wouldn't be able to make that project work.
That's correct.
The analysis does not try to speculate of what some other developer might try to do with that land without an incentive. The analysis doesn't even look at that, right?
Well, it looks at what the impact would be without the TIF. I mean, it has to set the parameters, so without the TIF, it, it shows what, for example, what the rate of return would have been probably negative.
The rate of return for that project, the proposed project.
That's correct.
But, like, again, if, if a developer is looking at a piece of property, and they're saying, I can build a 10-story mixed-use development here if I have this additional help from a TIF. When you look at that, you don't look at the fact that another developer might try to do a one-story, you know, just a bunch of houses, or just a retail facility, you don't look at other alternative projects, you're just doing the but-for of that project, right?
Let me, Councilman, let me try to answer that. The, the but-for analysis is, again, we're talking about infrastructure improvements. We're not talking about, the BioPark is an anomaly because of the RISO, which we had no control over. The legislature passed this RISO that makes TIF usable in stuff that you won't find in our TIF and policy, TIF policy that we put in front of you, that is on the Board of Finance website, is a direct link, everybody can have access to it. But I printed out a copy so that you all had it at your fingertips today. The, the, it is, you know, the infra, the roads, the water, the sewer, the conduit, the sidewalks, in some cases, the, the open space, that is all our property at the end of the project. We own it all. It becomes part of our core infrastructure inventory. So it's impossible to say, for example, well, if you only built a, you know, sidewalk on one side of the street, I mean, it, you end up splitting hairs. They've come with a development project and said, you know, we want to do 25 million in vertical development on this parcel, but there's no road here. Or, we can't afford to do the project and the sidewalk and the water and the sewer that comes with it. So that all becomes part of the analysis. I don't know that you can split it apart and say, well, instead of doing a five-story building, do a two-story building, because then we'd only have to do a half-inch, you know, pipe.
I'm just trying to make sure that there's not, that not confusion after the fact, that there are sometimes people who think we're doing more in terms of analysis than we're actually doing.
That's right.
And then the last question, the chair was indulging.
Last question.
Since all of the previous steps before legislation is introduced are administrative, is there any way to involve the council openly earlier in the more substantive parts of negotiation? And what I mean by that is, there is negotiating that happens when a TIF comes to the council, but the negotiation tends to be around side deals to mitigate the actual TIF that's been proposed, as opposed to administratively, different agencies are working with the developers and, you know, haggling over how much can be done to do what in an acceptable fashion. How does the council get involved in that part of the negotiating?
And that's an important question, I think we all like answered to.
I, I'm not sure I can answer it standing here. The, the haggling that occurs isn't the way you think it, it's occurring.
Which, because we're not there.
Right. So, I mean, it really is based around the but-for. If a developer comes in and says, I need, I don't know, an, an eight-lane road leading into my two-story parking garage in order to make this project work, yeah, you can bet that part of the analysis is going to be, is that true? Do they, and the answer is, maybe, obviously, in that case, no. Because, again, we're looking at our infrastructure, the stuff we're going to end up with, the amenities that we end up with when the project is completed. So there's not a negotiation of elements in, in the regard that you might think there is. The, the quote-unquote "side deals" that you refer to are things that have happened a rather recent example, it really started with Harbor Point, there was some negotiation with the U M B BioPark, and then obviously with Port Covington. That's a very, very recent thing, and most of that has happened with the council leading it. Council President shaking his head, because he was very involved.
There were some side.
So, um, I hate to interrupt, but we do have some other council members that have questions, so let's, let's try to limit it to two, and then we can go back. And that next person is Councilwoman Clark.
Well, I'm going to kind of pick up where my colleague left off, but, but I'm going to put it in terms of a statement question to, to both of you. And by the way, I've learned a lot, we, I think we all have, thank you. Okay, so, if I'm a councilperson who wants to get some of this subsidy out, where, out in the neighborhoods, so that we can begin to really accelerate our ability to develop neighborhoods outside the downtown area. My first question, because I'm learning what you're talking about, is, oh, and, and then we, and, and then if you were a person who, in, in the course of that, wanted to make sure of the balance, in other words, that you wanted to make sure in advance that people on the project in construction got prevailing wage, that people that went to work in, in shops and all that were developed through the subsidy got paid living wage, that, that all those kinds of issues were covered in advance by a policy. Would you suggest by right, like legislation by right, which I hadn't thought of before, or by policy? So would you say, like, your downtown, fill office buildings with residents, that's a by-right project? If we were to describe here, out, neighborhood, downtown's a neighborhood, too, but outside where most of the subsidies have, up until now, been focused, outside, out there where people are in some kind of pain, would you do it by right? For example, describe a, a land use situation that's generic, that's outside certain downtown boundaries, and that came with, but you got to do this, you got to, prevailing, you got to do living, you got to, you got to be equitable and transparent, blah, blah. And then it would just go into law, and by right, just like the people that, that bought these downtown office buildings and made them residents, somebody who decided to develop one of these generic lots somewhere out there.
Can you answer the question?
I'm not, I'm, I'm almost finished. Or, or is it, is it more effective with all the people involved? And by the way, it's been really such a good presentation, to have a, sort of a policy position from, from City Council about what, all those issues that I said.
Councilwoman, can he answer the question?
I think I get where you're, I think I get where you're going.
I'm sure he can, and I will now ask if he would, if they would.
I think I got you, where your, where your question's heading.
Sorry.
So there's a couple of answers to that. First of all, nobody is going to do a project in a councilperson's district without reaching out to the councilperson. It is generally the first question I ask somebody. It's like, have you met your councilperson? Have you found out where they stand on the project, what their expectations are, and whether or not they're going to support what it is you're asking to do? Because frankly, if you are, if a councilmember is hell-bent on opposing a project, that's something, so that's the first piece. The second piece is, what you're talking about is a broader policy discussion that this body engages in all the time, and that's something that, I may have strong opinions, we may not end up on the same side of that, but that's a politics discussion for the body and for, for the administration. The, the other piece is, and Mr. Braverman, Commissioner, will, can demonstrate some of the tools that he has now access to, through Bernie, through Core, that are really directing neighborhood-level investment at unprecedented levels. I mean, tens of millions, and it's even higher than that, he can tell you the number, it's a big number, that we've never seen before, thanks to an infusion of cash from the state, along with targeted, really direct neighborhood investment by housing.
I don't mean to cut you off, but I'm due to be cut off, and appropriately. So basically, so you're saying, see, that's the problem. Yes, people come to us, but when they come to us, they come to us with a, a project that's already proposed, and then we're supposed to, and then we pick around the edges of it. And I spent half my life picking around the edges, and I'm sure my councilpeople, colleagues do, too. We're talking about getting upfront and getting this out there, so that it's clear to the world that it's time to, it's time to get out into the neighborhoods, and I'm sure that there's lots of things going on, but is it real clear? And is it by right, like this downtown? So I've got to stop now because, but thank you.
Thank you. And we do have Councilman Pinkett.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think you said two questions? Okay.
Please.
Okay, I'll, I'll be obedient. So, thank you, President Cole. My, my first question, I, I want to go to new markets tax credits, just quickly. Can you speak briefly on the, the entities within the city who have allocations? Because it, it's of my opinion that, that those that do rarely use them in the city. And so can you talk about, those who have allocations, whether they're being used in the city or not, and what efforts we as a municipality are taking so that we could get our own allocation of new markets tax?
So, I don't know everybody that has an allocation, but I know that TRF gets a major allocation, Harbor Bank gets a pretty significant allocation, whatever entity, Bill Struvers, American Community Trust, has a small, gets a small allocation, Cordish Companies has gotten an allocation previously, some of the banks that have CDFIs attached get allocations in addition to Harbor. I will say that historically, it appears that most of the new market allocations that are being invested in Baltimore are coming from outside of the city. But there is a report that we're, I've asked my team to dig into, that you can actually look at new markets coming in, and the allocations, and where they're being spent. But to your point, you know, we, we, we do believe that new markets are an effective solution. We've seen it in other cities. I just got back from Cleveland, looking at what new markets do there, has done there. Cincinnati is effectively stacking new markets to make deals happen. We're seeing some of that here, right now. The problem is, we were exploring, along with several other entities, becoming a CDFI so that we could, the city, whether it be BDC or some entity, also go after an allocation of new markets. As of right now, they're set to expire at the end of this calendar year. So I'm not going to go through the expense of establishing an entity to create one if it's going to go away. So we need to see how Congress plays that out. You know, we'll get you that report as soon as I have my hands on it, because I've been asking, you and I've had that conversation. New markets have worked effectively for our projects, but could it be a greater impact if it continues on? Absolutely, we intend on pursuing it.
And I just had one other question for Mr. Kraus. Looking at the current TIF debt, what's the city's capacity for additional TIF debt, and are we TIFed out?
Certainly, Port Covington was a major impact, and, and that's why what we're doing with, with larger projects such as Port Covington, is we're utilizing, our intention is to use Medco as the issuer, and thereby allowing them to, to issue the debt on our behalf. And doing that will keep it off of the city's debt profile, and on their profile. And, and so I think that's, that's how we'll try to manage it going forward, larger deals. Now, if we have a smaller deal, I think we can absorb that, it's much more efficient if we did it. They, you know, Medco charges a fee to do what they do, but certainly the large projects, we've got to push them out.
So, but, so there is still capacity for the?
Yeah, there is, yes, there is some capacity, but, but any large project like, like Port Covington, we can't absorb that. I would not recommend we do that.
And so, okay, I just, I just wanted to be clear that there's more TIF debt available, and that, you know, I would encourage that we be more proactive in identifying, especially related to affordable housing, you know, opportunities to.
Yeah, but I want, I want to emphasize that, I mean, we have enough capacity for the commitments that we have, but every year, we've got to look at that, because there's a lot of, you know, criteria that rating agencies really drive this, as to what is an acceptable level of, of debt. So we do this every year, we take a look at what are, are other borrowings. I mean, it's not just TIF, it's GO bonds, it's leases, it's other things that we do that all become part of that tax-supported debt profile. So we look at that in total, and typically, we can accommodate, because things are doing, our assessed value's going up, our median income is going up, all those things kind of help our profile. So as long as those things are increasing, we should be able to accommodate things going forward. And if there is a problem, we'll push it out to Medco, is what our intention would be.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize Brandon Scott of the Second District has joined us, and Councilman Cohen of the First District has a question.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Director Cole, for the really thorough report. It's really encouraging to see some of the demand for middle and high-income apartments across our city. It means that folks want to move to Baltimore, and that's a good thing. However, I am concerned, and I said this yesterday, that we are staring down the barrel of an affordable housing crisis in Baltimore, and that our lack of truly affordable housing is directly interconnected with the public safety crisis that we are also in the midst of. I would just say that what I saw as a teacher in West and South Baltimore was many, many children that were either homeless or rent unstable, and as a result, were transient, moved around a lot. We know that that causes trauma, we know that it impacts academic outcomes, and we know that it leads to just unstable outcomes for our kids and our families. What I've observed in my first year on the council is that there is a great demand within our citizenry for people to really take destiny into their own hands and be part of rebuilding our city. And I saw this yesterday at the 2020 conference in the other room, and I saw this when Council Member Bullock and Mary Pat Clark hosted the Dollar Homes hearing. Folks want to be part of rebuilding the city, and they're not asking for a handout, you know, and I want to be really clear about that, that I think there's a shared understanding that people aren't looking for anything that's free, they just want to share in the growth that we're seeing as a city. that we're seeing as a city. And so, my question and my ask for you is, can we, as the BDC, as the city council, really try to match the enthusiasm and political creativity that I'm seeing from our citizens in pushing toward more of an affordable housing market, be it through pilots, TIFs, or any other form of subsidy, so that, you know, our citizens feel like we are standing with them as our city grows?
So, there is a, I didn't mention this tool, but there are low-income tax credits that are, what, 4% and 9%? And we've seen two projects on the west side of downtown that have benefited, one that's open and very successful, and one that's about to break ground, the M. on Madison and then the L. on Liberty. The Commissioner and I meet at least once a week now, and we have an extended meeting every other week, talking about these very issues. And he's got some tools that, that I do think will help continue to increase the affordable housing stock. There are other programs out there. I, I don't, I mean, obviously, we've been through every tool that I have presently, and I don't believe the pilot law has affordable in it. But, I mean, those are all things we would certainly be willing to talk to the, to the council about. I don't disagree with you that we've seen a ton of market-rate apartments dumping in. Downtown Partnership just finished their annual market assessment, and I believe the number is in excess of 5,000 additional market-rate units can be handled within a mile of the city core. So, there's still continued to be a demand there. In addition, we know that there's a demand for affordable, and as these low-income tax credit projects get very competitive, we're seeing folks that aren't able to get the allocation they need in order to make a project work. So, again, those are policy conversations that we continue to have, but I think the Commissioner can demonstrate in some of his numbers where investments happening in affordable as well.
I would just push that we have that sense of urgency, so that we do not end up displacing many of the folks that helped build this city.
So, we have one final question from Councilman Burnett of the 8th District, and then we'll , we're, take the next presentation from Housing and Community Development, and hopefully, he can answer some of these other housing questions and give the incentives that are out there that we desperately need to know about. Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Bill, and staff from BDC. This has definitely been a very informative presentation, and I'll speak for myself as a new, new councilman. So, I had a, one question around, so in the, the presentation or the packet that was given to us, it says the Board of Finance considers TIF projects with a significant public purpose and benefit. One, how do we define what public benefit is? And when I, really kind of rooted in that question is, for example, in the Port Covington deal, there are, in, in Harbor Point, there's park space developed, for example, that when we talk about public benefit, you know, that also makes the value of the vertical development more valuable, the housing stock more valuable. However, you know, we, we know that there are issues with the general public from, to my colleague's point, from folks who don't live downtown gaining access to these public benefits or perceived public benefits, but the accessibility is a challenge. And so, just really, the question is around, one, how do you define public benefit? And two, are there considerations made to transit access to, to these benefits, local hiring for the construction, equitable wages? And even the, you know, when you're looking at, when you're looking at a project, the ratio and ethnic, ethnic makeup of the neighborhood that you're making the investment in, and making sure that these, these public benefits are inclusive to all people in the city of Baltimore, and not just the folks who, who live in these, in these targeted areas.
So, the first question I can address, there are, in the TIF policy that is in front of you, the printed TIF policy, it, it has the allowable uses, and it goes through the public benefits. It's clearly defined in there. So, you can refer to that document. It's, it's not a heavy document, it just runs through the, the criteria. You can look at that, and I think that addresses your first part. I've been involved in three TIFs, one on the council, actually, I guess I've been involved in, in four, but three that are in process. Two at BDC was, was Port Covington and UMB BioPark, and then prior, on the council through the, the Harbor Point TIF. And I know that for those three, community benefits, things like local hiring and access and equity were all big parts of the conversation. In fact, the community benefits agreement that was signed with Sagamore and SB7 now addresses some of the issues you're talking about. The same thing happened, there was a community benefits agreement for the UMB BioPark that generated revenue for the community, for the business community as well. And then the Harbor Point TIF also had local hiring and all the things that you mentioned. Those have all been negotiated agreements with the developer. And in some cases, in all cases, the council played a significant role in how that was shaped. I know, at least for Port Covington, that was an extensive process that had lots of stakeholders and extended out for several, several months. I don't anticipate seeing another project of that size. It just, it just doesn't, there's nothing anywhere near it. So, I don't think we're ever seeing anything of that size again in this city. But as projects come along, we know that it's important to the council, which is why we encourage the developer to address it at the front end, understanding that those are the priorities that have been important to the council over the last three TIFs.
So, a follow-up to that, are, so these, these are negotiations, are, is there ways that this council or the state legislator can legislate that these considerations be made before the approval of a TIF? Because we've seen deals, you've, you've named deals that these things were negotiated into, however, that was political will that, that pushed that forward. But are there ways that we can kinda take away these administrative functions and make it a part of just how we do things in the city of Baltimore?
I mean, all of these arrangements that, that Mr. Cole just described were, were agreed to and firmed up before the TIF was approved. So, it, it's already part of that process.
Well, what I'm saying is, it's still an administrative function that's negotiated deal by deal. What I'm asking is, and maybe this is, you know, for us as the council to consider, are there methods that we can use to make sure that the, the TIF law itself makes local hiring a requirement that has clawbacks in it if the developers aren't meeting those requirements? And that actually defines public benefit from sort of an equity perspective and takes away sort of the administrative negotiation that goes forth project by project? Because what happens is, while the political will has existed in the previous council on a few latest deals, when we look further back, that's not necessarily been the case. And I think it shouldn't, it shouldn't be something that is negotiated, but just, again, moving forward, this is how we do things.
It sounds like there are strategies that the council can use.
Sure. And I know we, I know you wanna move on, Madam Chair. I guess the last was a really short question. It really is.
Quickly, quickly, because we got another presentation.
I know, I promise, I promise. So, the other piece is around disclosure. One of the, the questions that we get a lot around deals that are already in place are, you know, how do people find the progress where, you know, when, when a, for example, when pilot revenues are, are put forth as a, as a projection, how do citizens actually track that those projections actually meet actual revenues? Just sort of this, this more transparency and disclosure, I think, is really helpful for the citizens of Baltimore when looking at the progress of these deals, because a lot of promises are made upfront. But as, you know, the life of these projects can go upwards of 25 to 30 years, how do people actually follow the progress to make sure? And, and accountability measures, so that we can really see, okay, you said there'd be this much revenue coming in, this is what, this is where we are, this is where we are on target. Is that information easily available?
Okay. I mean, I can only address part of that, that question, and I can tell you that, that the, the information that goes into actually making the decision and, and passing the legislation, the projections and the plan and all of that is fully disclosed through the Board of Finance. The, the application is out there. Now, as far as, once the project is complete, how are we doing after that, I, I think is an issue that, that we would have to address separately. And I do, I do know, at least from the Department of Finance, we don't have the resources for that. And, and that would have to be, you know, tracking employment, I mean, are they meeting employment goals and things like that? That, I think employment development may be, I think they're doing some of that now. I believe Port Covington even has an auditor that's, that's gonna be tracking a lot of this.
So, to, to that point, the Port Covington project actually has a dedicated funded position to track their agreements and their, everything that was promised in that project? They're funding a full-time person in the comptroller's office, correct? Yeah. That, that will actually monitor that. But that, of course, is a huge, Harbor Point has a, I believe Harbor Point has.
And as a council, we asked for that.
Yeah.
And assisted on that, I remember that.
So, so for the recent projects, that's happening, for the historical projects, it's a lot more challenging, because in some cases, these projects have changed hands, and the original people are gone. But I know that for the recent stuff, for the modern, at least the last five, seven years, the tracking is happening. Harbor Point has a whole website dedicated to their performance on the TIF.
And what's that website? And I guess if we could, so really, this is maybe an offline thing for us to work on, but I think that's kind of what drives the frustration in the city, is that people don't know where to go, there's no central database to track the progress, there's not, there's a lack of transparency, frankly, that we really need to get a hold of. And I think that's something that we can work on as a body on the council and with Finance and BDC moving forward, that people, ordinary citizen can just go straight to the Finance Department's website and see where every project is moving forward. I think that would be a good thing for all of us.
Thank you. One, one last quick question, Bill, from Councilman Costello, and then we'll have the presentation from HCD.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Cole, can you briefly talk about, I know on Port Covington, while there was this extensive process to deal with the community benefits, there was actually a milestone that occurred beforehand with three MOUs that the city engaged with the developer on. Can you just very briefly, 30 seconds, talk about that process and how that worked?
Sure. So, understanding and knowing full well that on the Harbor Point TIF, that there were certain expectations, the adminis, the prior administration engaged with the developer directly and hammered out.
Excuse me?
Can you repeat what you asked?
Yes, yes, I will. I, I asked Ms. Trueheart, I asked, I brought up.
Before you, before you say something, you're not, please, there is, there is a process, there, excuse me, Ms. Trueheart, there is a process. Thank you. Please don't do that again. Councilman Costello.
Ms. Trueheart, the question that I asked was based on the experience during Port Covington. We were talking about a community benefits agreement, and I asked Mr. Cole to provide clarification on some of the negotiation that happened prior to the council, which was the city engaging in three MOUs with the developer prior to the bills being introduced.
So, you're correct, sir, the prior administration engaged directly.
And I'd just like to mention, remember, just because one person can't hear, we can't keep repeating, this is a, a hearing for the whole. Go ahead.
The, the prior administration engaged directly with the developer to establish a baseline MOU. The key there was baseline MOU for expectations around inclusionary housing, workforce development, and I don't, what's the third one? No, I'll think of it. Anyway, there were three separate MOUs that were established that were the baseline for the administration to support proceeding with the process. That baseline, then, once it got to the council, several of those agreements were amended, enhanced, and then there were other agreements that were developed between the developer and the community and the citywide community as a whole. So, that was merely, you know, the, the, kind of the basic ground rules for, these are our base expectations for this project to even proceed at that point. And then obviously, once it got to the council, that conversation intensified.
Thank you. One short question from Councilman Dorsey, and then we'll move with Commissioner Braverman.
In the breakdown of the legislation for TIFs, what it can be used for, one of the things in item five, it says parking, lighting, and other facilities. It says also necessary improvements, including streets and roads to, from, or within. And I'm wondering if we have a set fixed standard of criteria for what we consider necessary improvements? And also, it clearly says that it can be used for certain structured and surface parking facilities. I did a calculation, I know that this applies to the TIF law, but I also looked at the calculations on the pilot, and using a low-ball estimate, we have subsidized more than $100 million of parking spaces in the, I mean, that's using the numbers that are in your handout and a low-ball estimate on what I know the construction cost of a, of a structured parking space to be. We've subsidized more than $100 million of parking spaces, which leads to a high level of induced demand for car usage in this city, and is actually highly detrimental to the operation of public transit and other active modes of transportation. So, I wanna know where we can see a very clear understanding of what is necessary and how we're calculating the real and negative impacts to transit users by the demand of cars that we're inducing.
I think you're talking about most of those garages coming on in a completely different era in Baltimore, when there was a, a lot of those projects in the pilot law, as you, I don't know when you came in, but that pilot law was created primarily to incentivize downtown development at a time when everything had stalled. We're talking about, you know, two decades ago, when, when a lot of this stuff was starting to be stimulated, and one of the core criteria was creating more parking in Baltimore, downtown Baltimore. We look back now, obviously, with the way everything has changed, and you can go back and say, gosh, you know, we built a lot of parking spaces, and in a decade or two from now, how many of those are actually going to be needed? But at the time, the folks making the decision believed that parking was a priority. Obviously, the council, the last council and the current council, through zoning and reducing the number of parking spaces required for vertical development helps tremendously. We've seen what's happened in downtown, where at 10 Light Street, you can convert an office building 425 units and not build a single parking, parking space. That's ideal. I think you can talk to virtually any developer that would tell you if they could avoid building parking, they would. It's the most expensive part of basically lost revenue. And, you know, I agree with everything, everything you're saying about it. I don't know how to go back and change an 80s and 90s mentality for what was needed in an urban market. Everybody was recognizing that we had two-thirds of the workforce coming in from out of town, and they needed a place to park. That's changing and changing rapidly with the, the core, you know, the, the growth. We now have the 10th largest residential downtown population in the US. A lot of those folks aren't bringing vehicles, a lot of those garages are being very cost competitive.
I don't wanna go much longer, but understanding that we have used the law to subsidize car ownership and car usage through these processes, is BDC advocating for a change in the law to be able, because I've been told flat out that we can't use TIF in order to fund transit developments? Or, so, are we advocating for a change in order to be able to use TIF to fund transportation projects?
We, I don't believe we've ever used TIF for parking, pilot.
...in his presentation, we looked at parking revenue bonds.
Yeah, parking revenue bonds, but I, I understand where you're coming, I understand your, your question. I mean, just at Port Covington, for example, some of the intended uses of their TIF proceeds are for multimodal access to the site. It's not about just building cars, lanes, and, and opportunities for cars to come in. They're looking for a true mixed-use, mixed-modal development. The very first thing they've constructed down there is a bike path into the site. So, connecting South Baltimore to Port Covington.
But this says that we can use, we can use TIF specifically for the purpose of building, building parking and such, which is.
It's, it's an allowable use. I don't know that we've ever used TIF proceeds.
Uh, thank you. Now, we'll have Housing and Community Development, Commissioner Braverman, and I think this is the last presentation from the administration?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay. And then after the presentation, if you have questions for Commissioner Braverman, please pass your slips over.
Madam Chair, Mr. President, members of the council, members of the council, still up in the, up in the balcony, if any, and members of our audience, good morning. up in the, up in the balcony if any, and members of our audience, good morning. I'm Michael Braverman, I'm Commissioner of Department of Housing and Community Development. I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge my team who are here before we get started. Sharon, Sharon DeBoyne, who's our legislative liaison, Julie Day, our Chief of Staff, Steve James, Research and Planning, Peggy Webster, who runs project, Development Project Finance, and Alice Kennedy, who runs our Division of Green and Healthy Homes. Before I get started, I just wanted to say sort of to underscore, what I'm going to talk about a little bit differently is, so the level of investment that the Department of Housing and Community Development, or the city, the larger the city, is making in neighborhoods, and for affordable housing, to improve the quality of life through demolition, and to promote homeownership and new construction. I wanted to just start with to underscore Councilman Cohen's issue on affordable housing. Just to get started, to say that we still need to meet the affordable housing demand, but to get some sense of that baseline to indicate really how serious the problem is, more than 30% of all the rental units in Baltimore City are subsidized. And, and one in six is a deep subsidy of all the rental units in Baltimore City. And that's not enough, but that's giving you a sense of what that baseline is. And what I want to talk about is, is that baseline of what our, what our level of investment in communities is at the present moment. What is our level of investment? Just taking a look back over the past two years, and I think it's instructive because a quick roll-up is, we have leveraged through DHCD about $65 million into our neighborhoods to promote affordable housing outcomes, homeownership, and neighborhood transformation. And the state, as our partner, we have an extraordinary partnership with the state, has contributed another 70 million. So this, we're looking at, over the past couple of years, 135 million being invested in our neighborhoods, and we know that we need to do more. But we want to get a sense of what that baseline is today. So I've got a couple of slides, just to see how that actually looks in the neighborhoods. So the first, the first slide shows the home program, and also RAD. Janet Abrahams is not here today, she sends her greetings, she's unfortunately had a conflict, but the RAD program, as you may all know, is about preserving affordable housing. It's about ensuring that, that existing deeply subsidized affordable housing could remain affordable housing out into the future. And there's a phenomenal amount of dollars leveraged for that. But I'm going to talk for the moment about our home program, which is where DHCD, through a notice of funding availability, promotes development of affordable rental units in Baltimore City. We leverage the development of affordable rental units in Baltimore City, and the, the leverage ratio is extraordinary. So there's 10, just in the past two years, there's been 10 projects completed, there are seven under construction now, that's a total of about 1,200 affordable housing units, 800 completed, 400 pending, and a total of about $280 million leveraged. And I'm, I'm putting up the, that diagram just in each of these cases, so you can see, these are activities that are taking place geographically in our neighborhoods. And I wanted to, before I moved on, just to say that the home program is about 3 million a year, but it leverages, often leverages tax credit deals. And in Baltimore City, new construction, affordable housing is often done through a 9% tax credit, and to the extent the council is or isn't aware, the state allocates that, those tax credits across the state on the basis of a qualified allocation plan. And the most recent one essentially makes it nearly impossible to do a 9% deal in Baltimore City. And a period of comment with the state is tomorrow, it expires, and we intend, as well as the, the industry, the Maryland Association of, the Affordable Housing Coalition, intend to, to make it clear to the state that that is not, we understand that the goal is trying to be served by that change in the qualified allocation plan, but it's essentially preventing affordable housing, new construction, affordable housing, from being developed in Baltimore City with that tool, which is one of the most significant leverage tools that we have. So I wanted to just say that before I moved on. So here's the home money, and pretty big investments leveraged. I was going to go to CDBG next, which is a federal program often threatened and currently by this administration. Let's see, which one of these?
Is that working?
Okay. So, actually, can I, does this not work at all?
I don't know, where do you want to go?
Just go back one, because I, I didn't, okay, unlike, unlike President Cole, I didn't give you lots of slides, just one representative slide for every activity. This is 1401 Argyle, this is Sojourner House, this is at $750,000 of home funds in it, in Upton, and this is providing housing to the formerly homeless and developed by Episcopal Housing Corporation in Baltimore City, one of our great affordable housing developers. So, it has a number of different tools in it, but this just opened a couple of, about, I think a week or 10 days ago. If you look closely, you can see me in that picture somewhere. Bill, if you could give me the, the next slide. This is the, this is where CDBG money is going in Baltimore City, just over the past two years, it's roughly $25 million invested in the city of Baltimore, either in capital awards, operating awards to our partners that are doing development, down payment assistance to promote affordable homeownership, excuse me, to promote homeownership to eligible, CDBG eligible buyers, and rehab work for eligible homeowners in Baltimore City who meet the income criteria and need investments in their homes. That activity is run by, by Alice's shop. So, CDBG in Baltimore City, in our neighborhoods, is essentially preventing the exacerbation of the affordable housing crisis by investing in our existing homeowners, and by working with our developer partners, providing capital and operating to ensure that new housing development and affordable housing is promoted. This, and then, and one of those uses, in addition to that, is, is public benefits, in this case, Eager Park, over in EBDI. Just one slide for everything, thanks, Bill. I just wanted to touch the state partnership activity and let you see geographically where it's falling. This represents roughly $70 million of investment in the past two years from our state partners through Burney, Baltimore Regional Neighborhood Initiative, the Community Legacy Program, and the CORE program. And almost all of this activity, as you can see, is happening in our neighborhoods, transformative investments, providing the kind of gap and pre-development costs that are necessary to see investment in our, in our neighborhoods. Bill, there's one picture here, this is just, again, Wallbrook Lumber, out on, I think, the 2,600 block of West North Avenue, many of you might have been there, but this is the beginning of a project with Neighborhood Housing Services and Osprey to provide an incredible investment on the west side. And I believe that's, Bill, I believe that's Governor Hogan in the cab, if, go back right there. That is a state program, and, and that is providing incredible benefits to Baltimore City, and we are, of course, partnering in all those deals as we would in, in what eventually gets built here. Acquisition and disposition is important, you know, this is funded out of our budget, this is money that we use in the city of Baltimore to acquire properties where necessary to create development opportunities. We just saw 1401 Argyle, that was, we as a city had to acquire all of those parcels and assemble them, and get them out the door to dispose of them. When we dispose of them at less than their fair market value, to make a project like that happen, we are providing a development incentive. So just our acquisition activities alone to create sites was 5, 4.8 million in that period of time. And then, this is a project, this is a house in the Madison Park neighborhood, 1418 Madison Avenue, right on the border of Upton's Marble Hill, and being conveyed by us in the condition that you see, and being invested in by a local private developer, and turning around a homeownership product in, in Marble Hill. Demolition is another area that we as a city invest in, almost all of that is happening in our neighborhoods. Its intention is to create, to leverage investment, to stabilize our existing communities, to create interim and permanent green space, and that's an extraordinary expenditure. The past two years alone, based on just what's come down, not what we've committed to that's still standing, it's $26 million in stabilizations, it's 134 stabilized properties, which you can see in the green. Those are properties that we have invested about $30,000 in to ensure that they stand. Can think off the top of my head, in Harlem Park, the 700 block of North Fulton, we have invested in stabilizing so that that architectural treasure is there for future investment. So, we are talking about 26 million there, and you can see how it plays out in the neighborhoods. This is a block on Lansing, I believe, and if you've been to the corner of Bethel and Lansing, you know there's a garden there now. So we, if we go to, our, our efforts to provide support, to leverage homeownership in Baltimore City, we, to leverage homeownership and to ensure that our homeowners stay in their homes through the programs in our, what we call our dog cash division that Alice runs. So in the past two years alone, there's 204 properties where we've spent 2.3 million dollars to make sure that homeowners get the kinds of repairs that allow them to stay in their homes, so that they can benefit when communities are revitalizing, and so that they can stay in their homes irrespective where they live. And we have also provided 151 homeownership incentives, other than the CDBG incentives that we talked about. The CDBG income-eligible incentives is about 2.7 million dollars alone, and about 1.5 million in, in homeownership incentives for those who are not CDBG eligible. So, to give you, to roll that up, just to get a sense of it, past two years alone, that's 135 million going out into the neighborhoods, and this is, this is an improvement coming from the work that we do in a, in a homeowner, a deferred loan for a homeowner. So just, we wanted to make certain that the full picture was there, there are all different activities that we're doing to promote investment and affordability in Baltimore City, and the Department of Housing and Community Development, working with state partners, is basically all-in in the neighborhoods, and which we will continue to do. And I want to say that the mayor is committed to transformative investments in Baltimore City. So going forward, and she can be the first to talk to you about it, but we'll be looking forward to, you know, a community development strategy that really provides even additional resources to invest in our neighborhoods.
Thank you, Commissioner, and I have questions, there are questions from council members, and I have them in the order as they were given, and we're, we'll start with Councilman Robert Stokes.
Thank you. Commissioner, it's a two-part, are you aware of any different strategies used by other cities that have been successful at addressing needed infrastructure improvements and redevelopment of affordable housing without using TIFs?
Without using TIFs? Well, again, the TIF, as we learned today, is about the, capturing the increment, you know, and with affordable housing, you know, in, in general, often requires some kind of subsidy. So, but what, in, to ensure that affordable housing is a component part of a larger redevelopment, there are, there are, obviously, we are, I can say that we are looking to see, we have a Choice Neighborhoods application in place right now, Councilman, which you're familiar with. That's a federal program that we would like to take, that we'd like to benefit from, that will provide $30 million from HUD, in addition to our matching funds, to promote the, the development of affordable housing and mixing, you know, and integrating affordable housing into development. So, Choice is one, and that's a federal program. We do use pilots from time to time, the affordable housing, and I would say, I'm open to ideas from any other place, if you want to suggest one, I'd be the first to take advantage of it. But some things that work in other places don't always work here, but we would love to evaluate and problem-solve and see if they do.
And just one more, I know there's a lot of development going on in the 12th District what I represent, but a lot of times you have seniors that have been there for a long time, and they still there, and they watch the neighborhood just become vacant, and then you bring in new construction and new development. Is there programs there for those persons that have been there for a long time, because gentrification is not just new construction sometimes, it's the property tax. Because sometimes when you bring in new development, then their property tax, or that person that has been there for a long time, they can't afford it.
Right.
So, is there a program to assist residents?
Yeah.
I know you can cap, sometimes cap the property tax, but is this something in writing, or that can assist those residents?
Yeah, fortunately, there are two programs. One, there's just a homestead tax credit that caps your, what you're paying on taxes as a 4% cap. But there's also an actual income-eligible, I think it's called the homeowners' tax credit. So there's an income cap on what you can pay in taxes. So we shouldn't lose homeowners because they can't afford to pay their property taxes. But we do have a program, we just mentioned, to invest in that senior's house, how is it that we could get that senior to be able to stay in that home longer? Could we provide slip-and-fall protection? Could we change their furnace out so that their carrying costs from month to month go down? Those are the kinds of programs that we have for those seniors here as a city, and those are, those tax, homestead tax credit and homeowners' tax credit are state programs.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilman Henry.
I know, you miss us, right? The, okay, so I have, I have one question, and I have an idea.
Oh, ideas, great.
All right, so, so the question is, how big is our CDBG rehab pot, in terms of, like, how much money is that a year? And do we have any other sources of funding for rehab money other than CDBG?
Yes, there's 2.1 million in CDBG over the past two years that we've provided. And then, is that, I'm looking to Steve James, who knows everything about CDBG, whether he's, at any time.
It's kind of a 1.3% report a year, and then there's admin support.
Okay, I'll repeat that, and I'll turn it out. So on the CDBG side, about 1.3 a year, and then there's also admin support stuff that we provide to help run these programs. And then Alice, on the non-CDBG side?
I think he's speaking.
Okay. So this year, we have an additional $500,000 on top of that out of our, out of our city budget.
From, okay, from general fund dollars. Okay. And then the idea?
Yeah, it's actually capital.
Okay, I'm sorry, well, but it's still coming from general?
It's, it's coming from the city government, but it's the capital.
Well, actually, is it, if it's, so if it's capital, it's coming from geo-funds?
Yeah, I don't know what this, I can, I can get you that detail, Councilman, but I don't have it off the top of my head.
500, knowing that it's 500?
Yeah, the good part is 500,000, yeah.
I got you. And then the, the idea, or, and I'm happy to phrase, I'm happy to phrase it as a question. If, if you took a, a neighborhood like Woodburn McCabe, where Habitat for Humanity is doing a lot of houses, would there be something like a TIF? It may not qualify for a TIF as those are currently constructed, but I would say that using the same premise as a TIF, if you fix up a number of those houses, you will raise the values of the houses around them as well. So there's going to be incremental tax increase, tax revenue increase, in that area where you're doing it. So if you created something like a development district for an area where somebody is taking a bunch of vacant and blighted houses and redeveloping them as affordable housing, the tax increment could be the subsidy for creating that affordable housing.
I can only say that I'd be happy to explore that with you and, and Steve Kraus, and to see if we can, if there's something workable there, because what we're all looking for is ideas to promote affordable housing. I want to say, to start though, and something that you know, Councilman, really well, that that activity in Woodburn McCabe is stimulated by these tools that we just talked about. It's a great example. So some amount of demolition was done by the city, as you know, some amount of transfer of city-owned properties at- of city-owned properties at a, probably a dollar, if I were to guess, or something in that range.
Oh, my gosh, smaller houses.
Yeah, yeah. And so, the sale of the city-owned properties, and then the larger city code enforcement efforts in that area to keep, have everyone else keep pace. So, you know, these are the tools playing out in Woodburn McCabe that end up creating affordable housing opportunities and raising property values around it, because you go from, as you recall, what it was like, to with the trend it's on now, which is, you know, it's turned around completely.
I think all of us have areas that we could designate with that kind of help and assistance. Councilwoman Sneed.
So, my question is, and I think anyone can answer this, because I'm not sure directly. But anyway, the question is, how are you ensuring that workers' rights are being protected on projects that receive some of the incentives, or any type of funding?
Do you want to do that one? Workers' rights or receive incentives? I mean, I could just, I guess, when a certain amount of city money is in our projects, there are all sorts of requirements that go along with it, that require MBEW participation, city hires, et cetera, depending on what the project is. Is there anything else? There's no?
Using the tools that we already use, they have to meet certain?
Could you, Mike, Mike, thank you.
Using the existing tools, they have to meet the same requirements that anybody else would using, for the most part, using city money. And, I mean, we monitor it the same way we would any other project, MBEWBE compliance.
And city hires.
So, are there any binding contracts that the city would use to ensure local workforce participation on projects?
There's a local hiring. There is a local hiring requirement.
And do we track it? We do?
Yes. There's, there's, there's compliance.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Pinkett.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My first question, just as a point of clarity, and maybe I heard you wrong, but I think you said 30% of all the rental apartments in the city are subsidized?
Yes. I can say that.
So, would the high-performance market rate tax credit, would that be considered a subsidy?
I'm sorry, I meant subsidized for affordability.
Oh, okay, I just.
I'm sorry, I meant, that's a good clarification. Thank you so much, Councilman. What I meant to say is, of our rental units in Baltimore, in Baltimore City, which are roughly half of all of our housing units, a little less, excuse me, a little more than half, roughly 30%, maybe a little more, are affordable, subsidized affordable housing, just to give you a sense of that scale.
In the whole city?
Yeah, in the whole city.
Okay. I think you also mentioned the challenges with the LITC credits, the 9%. Being that the, I guess, the qualification criteria has been changed or modified, is there anything that the city can do, or any other strategies that we're proposing to? Because if, according to the current qualification, we won't be, you know, there won't be any projects to be able to use that credit to do affordable housing. What are we going to do to, other than lobby, to address that?
Right. Don't underestimate lobbying, but there is a, there are a number of reasons to believe that the 9% restriction on anything other than community of opportunity in the city of Baltimore, which is a relatively small footprint in the city of Baltimore, and in areas where the deals are difficult to do, is not likely to happen until the terms of the conciliation agreement that the state signed are met. And that's to create a certain number of affordable units in these communities of opportunity. And when that gets done, the QAP can be adjusted again. But what you're raising is how, I think, to Councilman Cohen's point as well, how creative can we be in this period of time to ensure that we can continue to produce affordable housing in Baltimore City? One of the big, you know, it's one leg being taken out of the stool that we rely on. And so, we're right now meeting with, we'll be meeting with the advocates, we're meeting with the, with the industry. How is it that we can move forward? Our Choice Neighborhoods application is one extraordinary way to move forward and create, literally, you know, a minimum of 1,300 new units, of which, I see Peggy's left us, but, you know, a minimum of, something in the range of at least, you know, 800 affordable.
I had another question related to, I guess, CDC's in the city, and maybe specifically Chodos. Can you just talk a little bit about the impact that they're having in the city, the capacity to do more, and are there certain communities where we could have a stronger, you know, presence, you know, of that type of entity to really help with affordable housing piece?
Let me just say, as far as the Choice Neighborhoods, Peggy left, I don't have those exact numbers, but my point is just that that is one of the strategies that we really feel can, can benefit Baltimore for affordable housing and for neighborhood redevelopment in this period of time going forward. Back to your question, that's a keystone of a successful strategy going forward, is to be partnering with our nonprofit development partners and to be supporting them. That's one of the great things that the state is doing in their Bernie program, and what we do with our CDBG funds, is providing operating support for those organizations that do, that work directly with their communities to identify, you know, where the investment should be, what that investment should be, and how it should move forward in terms of who's going to be doing it. And so, partnering with them is a keystone of our strategy. Promoting more activity like that going forward is also important and a part of our strategy moving forward.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Clark.
So, there isn't a day someone doesn't come asking for operating funds, and that's exactly what they want them for, and we want to be there to provide some amount of money that they can go match.
Well, first of all, I just wanted to say, Mr. Braverman, I want to thank you for the wonderful work of your staff. Alice Kennedy's shop, I mean, I can't believe how good they are.
Yeah.
And how good, how well they take care of my constituents, and unbelievable checklists of things, and it's very impressive.
Yeah, we have some real superstars. I wouldn't leave Steve and Julie out, though.
I'm not leaving them out. I was getting to them. No, I, I'm not at all.
Yeah.
And all the work that we've done together with the development staff has been great. I'm, I love your staffing. I just want to mention that we have to do something, and the mayor has said to me that she is selling houses for a dollar. I know, I'm not sure what she means, but I promised her I would come on over with Tyrone Boast, with our proposal, but first, we want to hear about the dollar program that she has. And I'm, I'm not challenging that, because I just heard, like, a reference, kind of, to that, and how we can get people to access the existing program, and also tie in the one that the Homes Group is recommending, which I think is a doable thing. So...
We're happy to work with you on that.
I know, I know. And so, first of all, I promised that we would sit down and learn about the houses that are being sold for a dollar already, and how we can get people connected with them right now while we, you know, while we get going with the Dollar House program that, you know, built on the old model, but updated. So, I just wanted to say that to you and tell you how helpful everybody's been. And the other thing I wanted to just say, but I'm not looking for an answer today, we've just been through an exercise in which everybody in your whole shop moved heaven and earth for us to be able to build a stage on a lot. It's, I mean, we can, we got the permit. But what it demonstrated was that when you put groups of houses together, like through the demolition that's occurring, then you have to condemn, acquire, consolidate before you can build the first stick of property. Okay. So, I just want to say, the ability to do that is a, is a staffing issue of mag, of major proportions, and it is something that I would like to follow up with you, not now, but thank you.
Thank you. I would say that you point out that for all the things we talked about, there's the general revenue associated with the staffing to get all these things done that we talked about, which is what you're highlighting. So, all that work to get the site to Sojourner House, required staff, we weren't talking about that cost. And what you're mentioning is, we should even expand that so that we can make sure that we're acquiring and consolidating with whatever capital that would cost, but that we have the staff to sort of put together.
You've got to do it, or else it's going to, it's going to go stale, it's going to stop.
Thank you.
And so, even the Dollar House program will require that kind of special attention to, to acquire and consolidate. And so, I think it's a major thing, it's a major part of the budget that should be backing up all these other programs so that they can move more quickly, like the old 26H kind of an issue.
Thank you, Mayor Penn.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Braverman, thank you for being here. I appreciate all the hard work that we do, especially around homeownership in the city, but there is a particular national trend that is actually very bad in Baltimore that I would like to highlight to see. One, have you guys thought about how we can attack the issue, but if not, how can we all partner together to do so? So, as you know, Harvard released their annual State of Housing in America study for 2017, and no surprise to anyone, there's a steep decline in the homeownership rate for African-Americans in this country, it's actually down to 42%. And one of the cities where there was the largest decline was Baltimore. Baltimore, Atlanta, Detroit, Dallas, to be specific. Have we thought about ways to specifically target African-Americans for homeownership in Baltimore? We know that at one point in Baltimore, we had a vibrant middle-class and black homeownership population in the city, but what we're continuing to see is that black people don't buy houses at the level that they should and that they could. And we know with the issues that we have with banks, not just in Baltimore, across the country, and being a lot less likely to give black people a mortgage, 25% less likely. But here in Baltimore, we have Harbor Bank. Have we thought about figuring out ways how we can be more intentional about figuring out ways to make more African-Americans homeowners that would help uplift and help neighborhoods become thriving again?
Yes, Councilman, I would say that Harvard study points to information that we're acutely aware of here in Baltimore City. It's numbers that we're familiar with and that we have, we're partnering right now. There are great partner organizations in Baltimore City, like working with the Associated Black Charities, and working with the African-American Home Builders Coalition, to specific, to work with them to help them achieve those goals. But also, all of our activity in neighborhoods across the city creates homeownership opportunities for American, for African-Americans, and we're seeing, we're seeing that happening in places around the city, in our middle, in our middle markets especially, but also in areas around Johns Hopkins, in Oliver again, in areas you may be familiar with. So, we're doing everything we can to promote our east side and west side as neighborhoods, and our middle markets in the northeast and northwest as neighborhoods that people can return to, and people are returning to. And we're working with our partners who have very dedicated strategies around this issue, including creating additional bank financing for the kinds of construction financing that's required to get that worked on.
Thank you, sir. And please let us know of any way that we can help further that work. I know for, in my neighborhood in particular, it's been wildly successful, but I think that we can all work together to make it even more successful.
Is front and center on our radar screen.
Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a similar line of questioning around, so my colleague, Councilwoman Sneed, asked about compliance of local hiring laws, affordable housing, all of those things that are really important to this council and to the city. Is there a central space that residents and members of the council and any other stakeholders can track the progress of these goals? How many people are hired from the neighborhood, wage levels, affordable housing levels, that kind of thing? Is there a central space that people can track the progress of the RAD development, CDBG developments, all of these programs, which are great? But I think, again, to this piece around transparency, it's important that all of our stakeholders are able to track the progress of promises that are made by developers in these partnerships when they receive subsidies. So, is there a space that can be publicly disclosed? And if not, I guess, can we continue to work offline to make that a reality so that we can hold both agencies and developers accountable?
I would like to work with you to make that happen. I know that all this stuff is public information, and that some sites are maintained, like EBDI, and I think maintains their site publicly, of all the money that we spent in EBDI, how many local hires has it leveraged, et cetera. But is it in one, is all the different things in one place? I'm not sure that that happens, and I'd be happy to work with you on that.
Yeah, I think it's necessary, especially so that we aren't putting, you know, both advocates, stakeholders, residents, in a position of having to know which projects receive subsidies. I mean, it's just kind of a yeoman's job to really keep track of everything that's happening in the city. And if we are using tax dollars, there should be more transparency, or tax incentives, I'll say, there should be more transparency in how that, how that's spent and the progress that is being made or not made. And that's really not necessarily to say that goals aren't being met, I don't want to imply that. But I think it, it's important for us to really be able to easily track that information. The second question I had, it was previously mentioned, and correct me if I was, if I misheard it, but that there was a demand for about 5,000 additional market rate units around the waterfront. Is that corrected, or?
So, Downtown Partnership every year, as part of their annual report, does a, I shouldn't say they do it every year, they do it periodically. And this year, they just did their market study to determine whether or not, because you get the question, is the bubble, is the downtown bubble coming? So, they did an analysis, and I believe the number was 5,000. The, the one-mile radius from downtown could absorb another 5,000 units of market rate.
Do we have a similar analysis of what the demand deficit is for affordable units citywide?
I don't know of one, but I will tell you that we still have affordable projects coming in in that same area as well. This was just market rate demand.
Okay. Is that something that we could get submitted to?
Well, I think that, just to give you a sense of the order of magnitude, the waitlist for Section 8 would be some order of magnitude, and it's more than, it's probably in the 30,000 range. So, afford, you know, again, we're talking about, we have a considerable percentage of our rental housing stock affordable, and to indicate that the demand is significantly greater than that.
Well, and I think that's important when we look at, especially for Section 8. I'll quote my colleague from this weekend, Councilman Henry mentioned that the, there's an issue, affordable housing issue is both tied to sort of absolutely subsidy and access to Section 8 housing, but also, there's a deficit in quality rental units that, for people who don't necessarily, aren't low-income enough to be in, or get, receive a Section 8 voucher, but not, can't necessarily afford a market rate unit on the waterfront either. And so, one, I guess, what efforts are being done to really hit that population, folks who are barely getting by, to improve the, how, the quality of rental units available for those folks, as well as really tracking how many people that would, would fall into that category of, not, and I can't afford, you know, $1,200 a month, but also don't qualify for a subsidy either.
Well, let me, let me be clear about one thing. Whether you qualify or subsidy or not is not the measure of whether you actually get one. The affordable housing programs that meet the deep subsidy, the federal programs, unfortunately are not like other eligibility programs, where if you're eligible, you receive them. If you're eligible for Section 8, you can be one of those 30,000 people on the waitlist. The federal government's only providing a certain amount of money, not enough to meet the need. That's the nut here in Baltimore City at the end of the day, is that folks can't afford, as you mentioned, to, to buy housing on the market, and the federal government, which helps folks get food if they can't afford to buy food, whether, and based on eligibility, does not do the same for housing. So, now, there are people in Baltimore City who, while eligible, simply are unable to get that kind of federal assistance, and we have other programs that, but often, the bulk of those are not at that deep subsidy level. So, that's a big part of this challenge, is that we have those in need here, located in Baltimore City, and the type of program... And the type of program that most meets their need, the federal government is really underfunded. And that's really, really where we ought to be placing our energies. Now, the second thing is to ensure that folks who are in market rate affordable get, you know, a better quality unit. I can say that I'm working with the council now on some legislative things that we can do to ensure that same, a level of quality, because for the subsidized unit, they are inspected. All those subsidized units are inspected regularly. But the folks that you're talking about in market rate affordable, one and two families, are not getting that same level of regulatory attention. So working with the council now to try and solve that problem.
Thank you.
Councilman Bullard?
Yes, good afternoon, Commissioner Braverman. Two quick questions that are around affordability, particularly long-term affordability. So you referenced before the RAD program, and as we know, that involves the private sector. I know there's been some, some questions around or some concern about that program. But also, you've mentioned that it's resulted in rehab of some properties. Could you talk about that program? And then the other piece about long-term affordability, your perspective as an organization on community land trust as a potential mechanism?
Right. Let me start by saying that, that, you know, the RAD is principally a program of the Housing Authority of Baltimore City. In Janet's absence, I'm going to speak to it as best I can to make sure that you have some information. But I would encourage you to follow up and Sharon to help follow up. But the most important thing to note, and again, it's, I don't mean to be beating the drum over again. I wish I wasn't. But there, we talked about Section 8. The other part of what the federal government does to provide housing for those who need a deep subsidy is the Housing Authority's hard units, right? Those are the, those are the Housing Authority family sites and the Housing Authority high-rises that you're familiar with, right? Only, the, a typical way a unit like that would work is the rents cover the costs, the operating costs and the reserves, et cetera, that you need and pay off the debt, et cetera. With that, with the, with the Housing Authority properties, you'll have to get the capital and the operating from the federal government every year because it's certainly not going to be supported by the rents. And I think I just mentioned, the federal government hasn't been very kind to people's needs for housing. And the way that spells out in the Housing Authority is to starve the Housing Authority of the capital it needs to maintain those units, literally. Literally to the point where places in the country, you have to shut those units down. And, and, and so in Baltimore, one program, which is called the Rental Assistance, Rental Assistance Demonstration Project, RAD, is about allowing, is to leverage private investment into those properties so that they can be, they can meet the capital needs and completely upgrade the units. So for most of the, for most of the mixed pop buildings, the high-rises in the city, we have leveraged, when it's all said and done, probably $600 million worth of, leveraged $600 million to provide those kinds of capital improvements. Probably at least $300 million in total construction costs in these units. And if you've seen any of them, you probably were at Holland's House. Holland's House, you know, they end up with an extraordinary product where people can be proud to live there and it can be an asset to the community. That's what our affordable housing at that deep subsidy should look like. It couldn't do that with the money that the federal government was providing. And I would say that in the current tax bill, I know that we've been, we've been, you know, sort of rattling chains here, but part of what's in the current tax plan is to eliminate the private activity bonds, which right now are a big part of our, of the, of the money that makes up the RAD deals, which would prevent many of those pending from closing. So there's a lot of bad things happening in that budget for cities. And then the second question you asked, I'm sorry.
Was around land trusts.
Around the land trusts. We, we have met with the Housing Roundtable, and we have committed to support a pilot that they are looking to do. So we want to encourage, like, again, we need all, all the good ideas we need to be working on because it's going to be more than one that's going to, it'll take to meet the needs. So we have offered to provide assistance. We've, we've been at meetings up until now, providing our technical, technical guidance. But we have said, let us know what might be necessary in terms of some amount of matching funds, in terms of properties you might need on the front end. We would, we would like to see whether we can make that a success in Baltimore.
Thank you.
Thank you. Public testimony will be allowed at this time, and we'll start with Ms. Kim Truheart.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm sort of disappointed in this hearing. I think you've missed an opportunity to expand the conversation around these incentives. I would have loved to have seen the Minority Business Office here talk about how they were incentivizing small and minority business creation in the city. I would love to expand the conversation around job creation to include, you know, I look at the, the hearing notice, and it says BDC and Finance and then other city agencies. You know, where is the Mayor's Office of Employment Development? They need to be here. And there needs to be a conversation around, how are we incentivizing job creation? You know, the, the topic here seems to be narrowly focused around commercial development, for profit. Where do we begin to talk about the public benefits of this commercial investment that's going on? There was an initial question around how the council could be more clued in to the process of requesting an incentive. I go to the place that I'm currently deep in, which is requesting grants. Lots of foundations will ask those who are interested in getting their money to propose a letter of intent to seek funding from the foundation. I think this council needs to look at adjusting the TIF and pilot, policy to say that any entity that is going to consider asking for public subsidy should submit a letter of intent. And that letter of intent can go to BDC, it can go to Finance, but more importantly, it needs to come to the council. And that way, you are aware early on that somebody is going to come begging the taxpayer for our money. And you're going to let us know that once this letter of intent is received. I also go back to 2010, when the Tax and Finance Committee did a study on these public subsidies. And that report that came out of that study made a nice little list of suggested changes to our legislation around these tools that are in the toolbox. And thanks to the credit of the Finance Board, they made a few modifications to their process without it being legislated. But several other suggestions remain on paper only. There's an opportunity for this body of the whole to do something about that, to look at those suggested changes and see if it is not, in fact, time to implement them. So I ask, you figure that out. Go do it. Go look at it. And if it needs to be refreshed, since it's now seven years old, that report, then refresh the report because the times have changed. Transparency. This government doesn't know what transparency is. So this body of the whole needs to help promote greater transparency by our government. The question about reporting actual revenues generated by these incentives versus what was projected in the planning, I think is an important question to be answered in terms of how well are we projecting the revenues, right? And whether or not, okay, we've been bamboozled upfront because I am a skeptic. And I think a couple of the incentives that have occurred in the last seven years sort of bamboozled the public and the council. And so getting feedback, getting a report periodically is something else that may need to be legislated. So again, if you're asking what can the council do? Legislate reporting. Legislate reporting for the public's consumption. Create a website. You know, there's been this, this conversation this afternoon about, well, there's nobody paid to do this. Yes, there is. The Baltimore Development Corporation is paid to do that, to monitor the execution of these programs. Now, whether or not they release the data to us is up to you. You need to tell them, give us the data, right? The Mayor's Office of Employment Development is supposed to track jobs that these incentives produce. They do. And every year that Karen Sitnick was the director, that I was here, I had to put in a Freedom of Information request to get the number of jobs that were created as a result of incentives. And now that she's gone, I'm not getting anything out of that office. And that makes no sense to me because we tout that we're going to have jobs, right? Every Wednesday on the Board of Estimates' agenda, we're spending millions and millions and millions of dollars, right? To do construction work, transportation work, sewage work. How many jobs get created? And if we're not spending money to produce an outcome for our residents, then you need to figure out how not to spend the money. Do something different. Because right now, there's got to be a public benefit. You've got to show us that. And you need to communicate it clearly. We shouldn't have to go begging for it. Because right now, it makes no sense. You can't justify the expenditures that have been going on in this city, right? That don't produce benefit for the public. It's outrageous. And if you don't know that that is your job, that if it's not happening automatically, legislate it. That's what you do. That's the only power you have. Legislate it. Get us the information. And then assess the information. Does it meet our objective? And if not, then fix it. Because right now, y'all sitting here playing games. What can we do? You can do a lot. Do it.
Thank you for your testimony. Brittany Howard.
Hello, my name is Brittany Howard. I am a junior at Coppin State University. We came here on a field trip. I'm a criminal justice major, political science minor. I just had one question for the BDC. And I was just wondering, when you guys are planning and organizing the things that you're, that you're sending your money to, do you have someone of the community, a citizen of the community, someone Baltimore-raised, someone who knows what we need in this city? Do you have someone like that or your cabinet? Or do you just assume what we may need? Because hotels and garages are not it. And it's definitely not helping at all. Now, I believe that if you had someone who knows the needs of our young black people, not only older, but black people, because we are the future of the community and we will be the ones living here. Also, I wanted to speak upon the case-by-case and the tax credit. Like the young, young, I'm sorry, the lady was saying. Is the case-by-case, I think that would be more suggestible for us. Because like they said, there aren't a lot of jobs out here. And it's like, as much, as hard as you try, you have, you have to try a little bit harder just to get a house, you know, here. And it's, I don't know. I'm sorry. But let me bring it back. But I really do believe that the BDC, you guys have gone totally off track with all of this money. The community organization, they have done so much. And they have received, they have received less money than the millions of dollars that the BDC has received. So I'm wondering, where's the conspiracy with this? The mayor said that she wanted to start back the Dollar House program, as you were saying. And I believe that's a good idea. We were riding here today, and we seen seven homes and maybe three that were filled on the street. That's things that people like us, people like Coppin students, people like you guys could go in and rebuild. That's where that money needs to go to. There's a place named Ambassador Theater. It's on Liberty Road. I don't know if any of you guys know where it's at, Ambassador Theater? It's been closed for, for how long now? That community needs that theater. Do you not think so? After it was closed in 1968, they opened up a skating rink, cosmetology school, a church, and it closed after 2001. That's something that in 2017, our community needs. People get shot across the street every single day at that shop. But I just, I believe that there needs to be a change with the direction of the money. I'm not sure who we need to speak to, what we need to do, but that's not right. And you guys asked them a question of, is there any way that it could be changed? Is there any way that we could go back and redevelop the things that y'all had sent this money to? And he said, no. So that's a loss to us. That's a lost. We can't get that money back. I wonder, you know, places like Lexington Market, Pennsylvania Avenue Market ran down to the streets. Do you care about that? That's the community of Baltimore, not just the city. And it's still downtown. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony and good success at Coppin. Is there anyone that wants to respond to, I guess, these last two? These are the only two people that signed up.
Well, then I just, to the young lady, thank her for being here. But the commissioner and I have spent, I can't even quantify how many hours trying to figure out a plan for Ambassador. It's privately owned, or was privately owned, is privately, still privately owned. Yeah, we're putting a half a million dollars in that building to keep it upright and to put a roof on it, to try to find some other way to repurpose that building. It's hard when you're dealing with privately-owned property. We agree that it's a gem. We've put every resource, at least in the current iteration into it, that we can to keep it stabilized. But that's one of the problems you run into when people leave a, you know, a great asset like that in private hands and then abuse it. And that's been privately held now. It's been through a couple of different enforcement actions, but it always, he always reclaims it, property owner reclaims it. We definitely agree that's community amenity.
Okay, we do have one more person that signed up on another sheet. Where, Councilwoman Clark, you'd like to respond?
Yeah, I, I just happened to run into the professor who's with the students from Coppin. And I know that they are interested in finding a place for a program that they're trying to develop. So I'm looking at the Housing Department sitting around and everything else. And yeah, so they're back there and they're with the young lady who just spoke. And if anybody can talk to them, maybe we can help them find a location. They were asking about the Dollar House program, but that's really for residents, not for a program. So I hate to waste all these great people that are sitting here from our agencies. So when we wrap this up, maybe a couple of people could talk to the young lady and her professor and.
Definitely.
Thank you.
One more person, I think, just signed up. Zachary Murray?
I won't get locked up, Kim, I promise. So.
So, good afternoon, councilmembers. I want to thank you for holding this hearing. It's a really important issue, probably one of the most defining issues in our city at this point. And also, Councilman Henry for submitting the resolution. I think what is a bit frustrating here is that the citizens have a very different perspective on what this is and the people who run these offices, right? We see this as a zero-sum game. We see this as a race to the bottom. We see this as a very shameless waste of city resources, right? We have no money to put forward to do things to help out our young people in the city. And we wonder why they go and fight and beat people up and harass people. It's because there are neighborhoods in the city that are entirely written off to them, that they have no access to because the council and the government as a whole refuses to provide housing opportunities to poor black folks in the city, everywhere in the city. And so we can't begin to punitively punish children when every single day in this city, we're punching them in the face. We're punching them in the gut and saying, nothing here is for you, but something here is for Legg Mason, something here is for Patarakis, something here is for Four Seasons, something here is for Exelon, who by the way, was a Fortune 500 company that was based here and then sold itself to Chicago and yet still got a really welcome subsidy from the state and from the city. And so we know that this is about your support for corporations, your willingness to bend over backwards and break the backs of your citizens to pretend that this city is economically viable. And so I want to talk about a couple of things that we need to take into consideration when we're thinking about TIFs. TIFs should be used purely in areas of disadvantage, not along your most valuable property.
Talking to Mike, yes.
TIFs should be used and tied specifically to areas of disadvantage, not to our most valuable property. What do we stand to benefit from when we give away our most valuable property for nothing? How does that rebuild areas where the need is real, where the investment really isn't coming in? TIFs in programs all across the country are tied this way, but somehow in Baltimore, we still allow for our TIFs to be used in areas of extreme value. I wonder why? You know, the City Council just a few months ago passed a multifamily residential tax credit, the High Performance Tax Credit. I think this had something to do with LEED Silver status, right? You all could have provided an option as an amendment, at least an option for affordability to be considered as something that developers could get the tax credit for. Yet, you passed this tax credit without so much as a conversation about how we could leverage this to get affordable housing. That's damn right shameful, okay? I want to talk about the fact that I'm 28 years old. For the last 20 years, you have been running these pilots, you've been running these TIFs, and only now are we having a conversation about what the hell these mean? Where are the amendments? Where is the legislation? Where is the change? We all know what this means. Many of us here study this every day. We want ideas from you. We want a city council that's doing more than being asleep at the wheel because it's having a very devastating impact on our communities. The city, you know, Councilman Henry, you mentioned earlier that some folks believe that the city doesn't have a development agenda. But I'm very clear that I know the city has a development agenda. It's in support of the wealthy. It's opposed to the poor. It's opposed to black people in this city. And so you all have to get together and be proactive because it's downright shameful that inclusionary housing wasn't even mentioned. But we know that there's a program. We know that the legislation is weak and useless. We know that it yielded under 30 units, but no conversation about what could be done to make those units happen now. You talk about 5,000 units in the pipeline. Are you waiting for the development window to close before you institute an inclusionary housing policy? Are you waiting for just before the election to happen? Why hasn't this happened yet? Why are we allowing people in the city to continue to suffer? Why are you presenting a picture here as if these programs are making things better when every day we see clear and convincing evidence, John Oliver this weekend, timely hearing, please watch it, that these policies do nothing, that they waste money, that they push people further and further into poverty, and some people, some very few people, further and further into advantage? What do we get out of giving a $400 million subsidy to a corporation that sold itself somewhere else and say, oh, if you stay here for 20 years, you get this? They're going to leave after 20 years. What do we get out of being pressured by Under Armour to write a check for $660 million on the backs of black youth, right? And they say, we need this, we need this, we can't get financing without this. Where's the financing, right? Why didn't the City Council say, show us your money? Show us where the banks are lining up to do this. You all demolished housing on North and Linden Avenue, right, without a right to return for the residents, right, without so much as secured financing by the developer, right? We had this vague commitment from Project Core, but no idea of what percentage of those apartments are going to be set aside as affordable, without, again, the right for those residents who were kicked out of housing that was by far not Baltimore's worst-case housing, right? They were kicked out and put on a Section 8 somewhere else and no right to return. And so it's clear that I think the City Council is not really moving forward in the way the people need. The mayor obviously needs to be in this conversation, some representatives from the mayor's office, more than just these officials, because the mayor clearly moves these policies forward. And I want to also bring up that it seems critical that we have a conversation about affirmatively furthering fair housing in the city. I'm not sure where we are on the list, but Baltimore, based on the fact that we basically invented residential segregation, should have clearly been in the first tier of cities, right? And then, you know, the other thing that frustrates me when we talk about education and it intersects here because tax policy has everything to do with education, is that you all are moving forward in the same direction, even though you're not considering a TIF right now. You've moved forward with a massive TIF, one of the largest ones ever written in national history, without so much as a real reconsideration about what's needed to ensure that our current education funding formula doesn't continue to screw over kids because you're writing checks to your friends, right? You're giving money to these benefactors and to these donors at the expense of our kids. And, you know, it's very clear. And one other thing I want to say is that the lack of vision is really hurting us now in the era of a Trump presidency. You talk about programs, New Market Tax Credit, Low Income Housing Tax Credit, CBDG Home. These are all programs that the Republican budget promises to zero out essentially, right? The 9% tax credit that we don't have access to in the city, it really sucks that that's the case, but they're talking about zeroing out the 4% tax credit, which is an 80/20 situation, right? And that's something that I think the Port Covington deal seems to be contingent on, right, is that they're going to use live tech funding to meet the affordable housing requirements that you all, which were measly, 10%, I think, 12%, something like that, that you all created. And so, you know, I just want to close by saying that, like, I don't know what to do in this city. I meet tons of people who don't know what to do because we know the issues very clearly. They're written very beautifully in the brew, right? Like, our development policy is devastating and it's a disaster, right? But like, there's no political will to do anything to create change. And you wonder why our youth are killing each other. You wonder why people are dying. It's because you all have got your hands on the trigger through economic development policy. And so let's get real about this and make some real change, or else we're going to continue to see the suffering. And Council President, I want to speak specifically to you on this because you've got the staff, right, is you need to do something now. This needed to have been done years ago, right? We're 20 years into these policies effectively. But something has to be done to change this because we know it's not right. And you're simply stoking the flames of the destruction of the city and allowing these corporations to get away with that. And it's a damn right shame. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. And that's it. We have one last comment from the main sponsor of the bill, and then we're going to take a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to also thank Ms. Trueheart for anticipating some of what I think will be the takeaways from this experience. I do want to continue to press for the idea of formally including the council earlier in the process for TIFs and pilots. My suggestion is not dissimilar to Ms. Trueheart's. I was simply going to say, there's already a point at which people come and apply to the city to, for tax increment financing or for a pilot. My suggestion would be that at the point at which somebody applies, that is when you should reach out to the Chair of the Council's Taxation, Finance and Economic Development Committee. And I think that the committee should have an informational hearing on the project at that point. And then we'll determine at that point whether or not there's going to be the need for additional involvement by the council in the project as it moves through the city's internal process for application. So that's just my suggestion off the top of my head, having listened to the presentation of how the process works right now. And then the other thing I would say is, I was more than a little concerned by the statement that we don't have the resources to provide our own website for the status of each of these projects currently. And I mean, it's good to know that the developer at Harbor Point has put up their own website to talk about how the project is progressing. But it really does seem like that should be something that the city should be able to provide. And so I would strongly encourage and I would ask for support from my colleagues to find a way for, I don't know if it would be a function of finance, if it would be a function of BDC, but I find it difficult to believe that that information isn't already available in-house. And it's just a question of getting it to somebody to put on a city-based website so that somebody can go to one place and see the performance of all of these different projects and the public development incentives that we've provided for them. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And for everyone, just keep in mind, this was a very important informational hearing to involve the council sooner and just, and to get that message out there that, you know, we are, we're looking at TIFs and pilots differently. There's a lot we have to do in this city. And this is a beginning step to show that we, as a full-body council, are paying attention and we're all willing to take steps to do what we can to better this city. On that note, do I have a motion?
No motion.
Second. Motion moved by President Young and second by Councilman Scott. Chairwoman Middleton, yes. President Young, yes. Councilman Cohen, yes. Yes. Councilman Scott, is a yes. Dorsey is absent. Councilman Henry?
I'd like to take a moment to explain my vote. I'm going to be voting yes, but I'd also like to take a moment and thank the Council President and the Chair of the Taxation and Finance Committee for helping to coordinate and putting this hearing together. I'd like to thank the BDC, Finance, Housing, and all the support staff in those agencies for putting together what has been a really good briefing. I hope that people who are here don't think that we have never done this before.
Exactly.
And that this is the first time we've done this in 20 years or something. This is the first time we've done this for the current council. There was a similar briefing under the previous council, but I think it was important to give the new people on the council an opportunity to have that same level of briefing and discussion that other councils had had previously. So thank you again, and my vote is yes.
Councilman Schleifer is absent. Councilman Pinkett, is a yes. Councilman Burnett, yes. Councilman Bullock, is a yes. Councilman Reisinger is absent. Councilman Costello is a yes. Councilman Stokes is absent. Councilwoman Snead is a yes. And Councilwoman Clark?
I'd like to, I'm voting yes, of course, but I would like to explain my vote because I think Mr. Murray has a lot to say about directions that we should now consider as a council and as a city. And that was really my intention when I co-authored the resolution that we're all voting for. My intention was to say, in this new term of office, to say that we need to thank everyone who has worked so hard to get us to this place and begin to establish principles of development that we request the city of Baltimore to follow hereafter. And we had a resolution in the last term of office, this didn't quite make it, but it has a lot of those principles embedded in it. Mine have to do with subsidies that go to the neighborhoods. I've already talked about that. Nothing wrong, just what was, was, carried out in good faith, but it's time for us to do, to change course or to amend the course and to help, ask all the same talented people to work with the communities and the council to help the QE II make its turn and find its way to where the need is the greatest now. And to make those subsidies that go out there to attract development sufficient to do so. And how we do that, I do not know, but the talent is here for us to figure that out and to make sure that everyone who works on those subsidized developments is paid prevailing wage to build it and living wage later when the shops and everything open up. It's not that too much to ask and that the process be transparent. But we have, the call from the city is, use the talents and help save the city itself. And I know that's going on, and I know there are projects, but if people don't feel that they own them and have access and know how to do, get, be, then it's, then we don't. So I hope that this council, this new council, which has so much promise for the future, will take this on and work with everyone in this room to come up with the QE II steering mechanism into our future here. I vote yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman Clark. And Councilman Dorsey has returned. Did you want to take a vote?
Yes.
And you're a yes. Thank you. Okay, this will be moved to the second reader at the next council meeting, which is Monday. And this concludes the committee of the whole informational hearing on Resolution 170020R. And this committee stands adjourned. Thank you all for attending. And make sure you check your seats. We've been here for about three hours. And again, thank all the agencies for your attendance and support.
Thank you, Bill. Thanks, Madam Chair.
This will not go out...